As we have our members here on March 20th, I'm sorry, pursuant to the two of the Acts of 2023, March 29, 2023, Governor Mara Healy signed into law an act making appropriations for fiscal year 2023 to provide for supplementing certain existing appropriations and for certain other activities and projects. This act includes an extension until March 31, 2025 of remote meeting provisions. The August 29, 2024 Select Board meeting will be conducted via remote, participated by the board, and I will grant permission to Charlotte and Westwood Media Center to record the meeting and to anyone else who wishes to record the meeting. I'd also like to say that if residents would like to use the Q and A feature in Zoom to submit a question in writing to be read by the chair, although tonight it might be Tish. And if you want to raise your hand if you'd like to be recognized and speak, you may do so, but that will be a two-minute limit on that. And I think that's it. So let me just go around the horn here. We've got Mary Ann, Rob, Danielle, Tish, Kathy, great, I'm sorry, Katie, great to see you. Chris, Nora, thank you for joining, and let's get started. So the chairs update. Unless I missed something. The first thing on my chairs update is the John J. Cronin Public Service Award for 2025. Select Board is now accepting nominations. This award is named for the late John Cronin Town Treasure, who for many years selfishly gave of his time for the betterment of the community, both as an elected official and numerous volunteer activities within and outside of the community. Just an outstanding citizen. Past recipients include Al Wazielko, Tom McCusker, Ned Richardson, Barbara Delisle, Steve Raski, Mike Crone, Patrick O'Hern, and Jim Gavin. The nomination forms are available online on the town's website or contact the Select Board's office at selectboard@townhall.westwood MA.us, and we'll have those sent to you. These should be submitted by, I believe it's... The award will be given at the annual town meeting, and I think the deadline is down here further, by March 7. And the committee is composed of myself, Joseph Pervetera, Select Board Chair, John Cronin Jr., Chris Coleman, Town Administrator, Molly Keane, Assistant Town Administrator/Human Resource Director, Stephanie McManus, Assistant Town Administrative Finance Director, and past recipients, James Gavin and Patrick O'Hern. Nominations must be submitted by March 7, 2025 by email or to the board's sluggments below. I don't think I missed anything on that, Mary Ann. Did I hit all the bases?
I believe you did, Joe.
Okay, thanks, Mary Ann. And so that brings us up to the town administrators update. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two things I'd just like to acknowledge. One is the town is going to receive a second-place award in category of annual town meeting. This is for populations of 15,001 to 30,000. This will be presented at the MMA's annual town meeting, which is going to be later in January, and a special thanks to all the department heads who submitted the information and really to Janice Donovan in our office for coordinating that, putting all that together, submitting it in last year. Just as a reminder, we received third for everyone's hard work. This year we received second, so we're moving up into those categories. I want to thank everyone for their work in that area. Also, I want to acknowledge that we do have the Human Services Department here. This evening, I just want to acknowledge the work of many people, but specifically to talk about recreation for their work on December 31 with the fireworks, providing Westwood with a great send-off of 2024 and a great introduction to 2025. We had donations from Roach Brothers and Westwood Young Women's Club, which we thank them very much for being key donators to provide that event, but also want to thank the team for putting on such a great event. So thank you all for that. Mr. Chair, that is my update.
Excellent. Thank you, Chris. We're going to move on to department updates. This is something that I asked for when I came onto the chairs role here. And tonight, we're going to hear from Human Services, Council on Aging, Library Recreation and Youth Family. For Human Services Departments to provide update on their respective departments, including hires, retirements, other employee news, upcoming town events. We have the Council on Aging Director Lena Arena De Rosa, Library Director Lizzie McGovern, Rec Director Rich Adams, Youth Family Services Director Katie Colheart, and Director of Human Services Director Danielle Sutton. And why don't we begin? And I've attended all of these groups, thoroughly enjoyed them. Lena, can we start with you, please? Can you give us an update?
Oh, Joe, I'm just gonna do a little overview of Human Services and then let each of the department heads give more specifics about the different divisions within Human Services, if that's okay?
That's exactly what I was thinking, Danielle. Thank you.
Excellent. All right. So hi, everybody, and thanks again, Joe, for the introduction. We're all happy to be here tonight. As Joe said, I'm Danielle Sutton. I'm the Director of Human Services. So I'm going to give just a couple of minutes overview, and then each of the departments will have a couple of minutes to speak more specifically about their department. And so just to give a little background, the Human Services Department was officially formed in July of 2022, and that brought together the pre-existing departments of Council on Aging, Library, Recreation, and Youth and Family Services, all under this umbrella now of Human Services. And this followed in the footsteps of other departments like Finance, DPW, Community Economic Development, who kind of come together in the same way in prior years. And since that formation in 2022, there's been the opportunity for more communication and collaboration between the departments within Human Services, more direct support for those department heads, and more large-scale community projects that would pertain to Human Services. So in my role as Director of Human Services, I was able to work with the Commission on Disability and get a grant from the Massachusetts Office on Disability to do a town-wide ADA self-evaluation and transition plan, and this aims to increase accessibility within the town. That's something that we were able to do with that new formation. Also, able to oversee projects like securing grants and overseeing mental health resources for the whole of the community, and things like overseeing the allocation of opioid abatement funds for the whole of the community. So that's now able to happen under Human Services. And the overall goal of the Human Services Department, now that we're all together, is to promote the health and well-being of residents and other community members through a variety of programs and services that support people across the lifespan. So individuals and families from birth, you know, through end of life. And I'm smiling because I think that's so special. You've all heard me talk about it in different settings, but I'm glad to be able to talk about it one more time because I think about what that means and the story behind it, and that you can take your child to Storytime at the library, your baby, you know, and take them to swim lessons at the recreation pool. And then when they're a little older, they can go to summer camp at recreation, or they can go to Youth and Family Services and do a group that can help them, you know, manage feelings and situations. When they're in high school, they can volunteer at the library, at the COA, at Youth and Family Services, and they can get their first jobs at the Recreation Department as camp counselors or lifeguards. Adults can join rec leagues, and they can join book clubs, and they have all of that. And then seniors have the specialized programs, as Lena says, everything from art to zumba at the COA. And we still have library and recreation for all of those ages. So it's just an amazing wealth of resources and supports that really shows the town's commitment to supporting people throughout their life in Westwood, and I can't say enough about it. So I will now hand it off and start with Lena from the Council on Aging.
That was a great overview. Thank you, Danielle, and thank you, Select Board, for inviting me. This is great. Thank you. First of all, I just want to give a quick overview of us, and I'm going to try and keep this to three minutes. Danielle, you got the clock going? Okay, here we go. The mission of the COA is to provide information, services, and programs that help Westwood's aging adults stay healthy, connected, and age well. Before I go into what we're doing, I'd like some of you to understand some statistics. Residents over 60 years of age comprise around 20% of the total town population. COA hosts seniors 3,500 times each month. This includes seniors who come in more than once. Many seniors come in multiple times each week for different programs. That includes regular programs, special programs, transportation, and outreach. The town budget pays for staff salaries, supplies, and running of the building. Our staff includes a director, an assistant director, a social worker, an administrative assistant, van drivers, one full-time, one part-time, and three as needed. The COA Friends Group and annual State Formula Grant, as well as donations, pay for 18 regular weekly programs, a weekly elder nurse, and many special programs and lunches and events. The center averages four to six special programs every month, and most of our programs, whether they're special or regular, are filled to capacity. Our biggest problem is space most of the time. COA works closely with the library through their mobile library, Youth and Family Services with Westwood Rights, Schools Pine Hill Intergenerational Program, music programs, the Rec Department, First Aid for Grandparents, as well as the Westwood Police Department, Fire Department, Clerk's Office to find solutions and outreaches for seniors. Okay, updates. The COA Assistant Director is working on her Elder Services Certificate from UMass, and that's paid through the town budget. The COA Social Worker is working to finalize her independent license so she can offer clinical programs and counseling. The COA Administrative Assistant has organized and coordinated over 50 seniors with the Tax Work Off Program. Our SHINE counselors, we now have two, helped over 125 seniors with updating their benefits during open enrollment. Our Veteran Service Officer comes in once a week and works closely with COA, as many veterans are retirees, and we are now getting solar panels and EV chargers, working with the town to have them installed in the next year. And then looking ahead, and Danielle, I know my three minutes are almost up. Looking ahead, COA will be updating staff job descriptions, working to upgrade some of my staff, especially my administrative assistant to become an office assistant. And we will be requesting a second part-time benefited van driver to keep up with the need of the seniors in our community. Okay, I think I did that in three minutes.
You did that in 2:55.
All right.
Well done.
Thank you again for having us. Next, questions?
I think we're gonna do a brief, if anybody had any questions for each department head. So if anyone has any questions for Lena from the Select Board or Administration, now would be the time, and then we'll move on to Lizzie at the library.
No questions, just to thank you, Lena, for everything that you do and your staff. You do an amazing job.
And we love what we do. Thank you.
Yeah, I would echo Mary Ann's comment and also highlight, and I'm sure this will be a recurring theme throughout each of the updates from your team, Danielle, but, you know, when we talk about services and we talk about the services that the town provides through the annual town budget, you know, this is part of what makes Westwood such a special place, is that, you know, we provide these type of services for our residents, really from birth all the way through life, you know? And so I think it's spectacular what you're doing, and I look forward to hearing the other updates. Who's up next, Danielle?
I think it's Lizzie, or I know it's Lizzie. I just wanted to make sure no one else had anything. Go ahead, Lizzie.
Thanks. Is the time going? I apologize for my croaky voice. I think everyone has a cold this time of year. But I talk fast, which comes in handy in this case, but I have a lot to cover. So I'm from the library, and I just want to give a brief overview. I think I included in your packet our strategic plan that we're in year, we're going into year three of. So this is kind of a review of our last year and all we've accomplished. Our mission at the library is to provide easy-to-access resources, services, and experiences that invite people of all ages, cultures, and interests to connect, explore, relax, problem solve, and thrive. We just tried to fit every little grain that we could in there. We have six strategic initiatives, so we want to draw more people in. We want to increase quality of life of people in Westwood. We want to connect people and ease divides, expand availability and outreach, and surprise and delight and uplift our community. So no, no big feat there. In 2024, we had over 143,155 visits, a total for both the main library and the Islington Branch. We held over 828 programs. Some of those, that's just the total amount in-house and outreach, with over 15,000 attendees, which was up 9%, which was a huge from one year to the next for us. People still love physical materials and books, and we had a total of over 213,000 physical checkouts of materials, and that's up 3% from the previous year. And it's not far behind for our digital, so we have to balance the fact that so many people are also using, myself included, audio streaming capabilities. So the library's keeping up with that, and we had over almost 70,000 digital checkouts on our various streaming services that are all free. Chris, it's free. Use it. Don't use Audible. The other thing that's been really popular is our study room usage. It's been up 15%. It is, they're booked all the time. We have two study rooms, and it's all the time. We did 1,000 new library cards in 2024. Just a fun little tidbit of our favorite library of things that went out were hotspots was number one, Wi-Fi hotspots, puzzles, Nintendo Switch, PlayStation 5s, and Xbox. So that's just a small sampling of our library of things, other than books that we have. I'm not going to go through all of our different categories, but I just wanted to highlight a few things under each category of drawing more people in. We expanded and created a world languages collection, so now we have Mandarin Collection that was funded by our 21st Century Fund to get that started. We did non-traditional programs. We did after-hours events at the library. We did movie nights, a sports book club. And one of the most exciting things is the library's now Passport Acceptance Agency. So now you can browse books while you're having to do this kind of boring administrative task. And that's been really well received by the public. We continue to do our Walking Book Club, which we do at Hale, so that's part of our Blue Zone. Our meeting room usage for the meeting rooms has grown so much that we've hosted so many local meetings as well as community groups. We collaborated with other town departments to share information and initiatives, including the Housing Production Plan and the Recycling Right with DPW. Summer reading continues to be a huge hit for families. We had over 1,000 kids participate in summer reading. It's a tradition in Westwood, and I'm so thankful that the families and everyone, like, look forward to it and really engage with it. I'm getting my text from Danielle. And then my most exciting is that we, thanks to the COA, we've launched our first mobile library. So we have our Bookmobile. It went to Westwood Day, Harvest Fest, Trunk or Treat at University Station, and COA, and we're looking forward to doing more with that this year. And really quick, for 2025, we're doing a One Book One Town. We're having author Celeste Ng come to the library. And all month long, we're going to be talking and engaging with this book, Little Fires Everywhere. So put that in your calendar at the end of March. It's going to be a really exciting program to engage everybody in town around one book and really connect with each other through reading. And we're getting a new website and an AV upgrade in the meeting room, and lots more. I know I'm probably out of my time. Sorry.
That was great, Lizzie. And there's time. It was just 3:30. So cool.
Oh, 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 oh. I should have just read it. I shouldn't have tried to go wrong.
Appreciate it, and I know you're willing and ready for questions if anybody has them.
Well, I feel like there's like an internal, like, competition. I was like, okay, Lena was like, three, you know, two minutes and like, you know, 30 seconds, and I'm like, all right, Rich will be faster.
So, Lizzie, I mean, you know, I guess as I read through the materials that were in the packet and listening to you, there were a couple of things that really sort of stood out for me. You know, interested in how we might further support you in spreading the word. I don't know how much people know about some of the wonderful programs that you either initiated or continued. I mean, to me, the one that was really cool was the Walking Book Club, which sort of dovetailed your Think Blue initiative on the Blue Zone. Just curious how many people participate in that, how many actually know about it, and what do you do to continue it in the colder months?
So they usually, we do like three or four in the fall, and then we take a break in these colder months, and then we kick it back up in the spring. We have Suzie Canale and Patty Wade, so they're both library staff, are both like really engaged with it and took it off. So we meet at Hale, we pick a book, we read it, and then they discuss it and then go for a walk. And it started last year, and we probably had maybe like four or five participants. And then I have, I think I included a picture in the packet, and now it goes up to like nine or 10 rotating people come. And it's just a really good way to connect, meet other people, and still kind of engage in literature.
I didn't know if there was anything that, you know, you could do in the wintertime if you reached out to like a like-minded business in town. Exorcyc and Sydney over there come to mind. I met her at Westwood Day. And, you know, that whole benefit, mental and physical health movement and discussion, you know, I think that that goes great with your, you know, connectedness as well. So I think you guys are doing some great work, and if we can help you in any way, get the word out.
Yeah, that's huge. Most of it is people saying, I didn't know the library did that. I hadn't like, been doing like notary services for years. People are like, I didn't know the library had that. And so we try to always include things, the Westwood word, but I think word of mouth and giving this, and having a moment in here is really important. So I really appreciate the time to talk and just kind of share what we, that we will be doing for everyone.
I just want to briefly echo that, Lizzie, especially as a summer reading program alumna. Very proud. So glad that program is still going strong after a number of decades. And I just, kudos to you for the increase in usage and visits. And I'm just wondering, obviously, your strategic plan has been in place, but can you briefly encapsulate what you think that's attributable to?
Oh, the staff. Not, it's our staff. We have a really good, obviously, it's, that's your intellectual capital, right? That's like the most important thing. And the creative mindset, the engagement, the fact that, at least in our culture here in the library, that we allow people to bring ideas, and then we're like, yeah, let's go for it. And that comes from the top down. And when I started, I told the story before, but Chris was, told me like, it's okay to try something and fail, and I was like, no, it's not. And he's like, no, it's okay. You gotta try something. And having like the top person kind of give you that, like, so that I can trickle that down, where I'm like, well, let's try this program. Oh, let's do a walking book club. Let's see that. And just the customer service, like the frontline staff that come in here, they're like, it's a relationship where people come in every week to get their books and have that chat. But I would say all of that is just to the passion of every person, whether you work one night a week at the library or you're here 35 hours. I think it's the staff.
It's tremendous. Thank you for your leadership. Very exciting update.
Okay, next up in Human Services, we have Rich Adams, Director of the Recreation Department.
Great, thanks, Danielle, and thanks for having me tonight here, folks. Happy New Year. So at the Recreation Department, it's our mission to provide a broad variety of safe, fun, and high-quality programs and events to participants of all ages, interests, and abilities within the community. We do so in five main areas, the first being what we refer to as general recreation. So this would be our programs such as summer camp, our sports and fitness clinics, arts programs. We categorize a lot of our programs by age, so we have grouping for adult and teen, for youth and pre-K. And then lastly, our newest is therapeutic rec programs, which we added a couple of years ago now, which are programs designed for individuals that need and require additional accommodations. Our second area is aquatics. We're responsible for running and maintaining the town pool. We offer memberships for lap swims. We have swim lessons, both in a group and private setting. We run swim teams in the winter and summer, and we also host the high school swim team. We offer a plethora of other programs that, in the pool, as well as renting to outside entities. Another area that we're responsible for is coordinating the town's special events, most notably, of course, Westwood Day. And as Chris acknowledged earlier, the New Year's Eve fireworks, just to name a couple. My team is responsible for scheduling and permitting the athletic fields throughout the town, both on the school property as well as town property. And then lastly, we coordinate maintenance of the playgrounds and the courts in town. So to give you a sense of scale, we have about 100,000 interactions with our patrons on an annual basis, and that is up quite considerably over the past, say, four or five years, representing 60 to 70% growth in that timeframe. We service ages from 1 to 80 and above. And I also think it's noteworthy to highlight that we employ over 100 part-time employees annually, virtually all of whom are Westwood High School and college students. So we're pretty proud of that. We're able to give them their first job, and not only do we get to recreate them, we get to employ them and teach them some life skills as well. So yeah, so that's recreation in a nutshell.
Thank you so much, Rich. Does anyone have questions or comments?
Rob? Rich, I just want to thank you, and I wanted to point out a couple of things in particular. Number one, I really appreciate how hard you and your staff have worked to make our programs in Westwood more accessible for folks in the community. I know that's been a real focus, and I appreciate all of that effort. And I just want to underscore, we talk about Westwood Day, and I think most folks out there may not realize that that's a year-long project for you folks, and how hard you work to make that happen, not knowing what the weather might be that day.
It's a little soggy this year.
But you do a terrific job with that, and the fireworks, and all of the programming. So thank you so much. They are truly vital to our community.
And I'll just echo what Lizzie said earlier, that my staff is tremendous. They do a great job. They're very dedicated, and obviously, everything that we do is a result of their efforts, so.
Yeah, I'll dovetail on Mary Ann's and say that, you know, you guys also do a great job accommodating so many different user groups across fields and gyms and things like that. And hopefully soon, we'll have a few new fields online down at the new Pine Hill, so that should also help believe you, I bet you are. Thanks for all you guys do.
I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, and last but certainly not least, we have Katie Colheart, the Director of our Youth and Family Services Department.
Thanks, Danielle. Thanks for letting us be here tonight. It's really exciting to talk about the work that we do as a department and for our staff. So just an overview, hopefully you guys know what we do, but to kind of condense it all, Westwood Youth and Family Services is committed to enhancing the well-being of youth and families in Westwood, both on an individual and collective level. So we play a crucial role in supporting residents and the students of Westwood through a variety of mental health and programmatic services to address individual and community needs. We do that in three kind of buckets, as I like to describe it. Our first is our clinical services. So our clinical services include individual and family therapy, parent and caregiver consultation, resource referral, and after-school and during-school clinical groups that we provide. While we don't have mass numbers of folks, I think it's important to note that that clinical services alone takes up about 35 to 40 one-to-one staff hours a week with individuals in town, and we think that's pretty special. In addition, we run several programmatic groups that foster positive youth development and community engagement for high schoolers and young folks alike. They include our peer education programs that kind of foster leadership to younger students. So for example, high schoolers in our Body Safety Theater Program put on skits for all the third grade in town. And our Be Smart Program, which is a bullying program, prevention program, promotes respectful relationships to all sixth graders in town. In addition, we have initiatives such as our mentor programs. Friends Networking promotes engagement between high schoolers and elementary schoolers. Library Leaders supports the library staff to have role models throughout the library during half-day Wednesdays and on Fridays to kind of help support with all of the middle schoolers who congregate at the library. And then we have our intergenerational program, where we partner with all Human Service Departments, but mainly the COA, to promote social engagement between senior residents and Westwood High School students. And most recently, we have expanded our offerings to middle school students. So programs like Yoga Flow for Teens, our Squad Skills Workshop, as well as our new wellness program, Tranquil Trails. And then lastly, we are deeply engaged in the community through numerous partnerships. So for example, our Ray Award, we partner with the Rotary to support that program. And then our staff contribute a significant amount of time sitting on town committees, such as Early Childhood Committee, Westwood Communities' Chest, BID Meetum, and then several school committees, task force, and student support meetings. So it's about 20 to 25 hours a month that we're kind of engaged with community groups. And then the major part where we have the most community impact that we are probably known for is our gift-giving program, so our holiday-giving program and our birthday-giving program. And so this year, I can say that we help support 126 youth during the holidays. And so this year I can say that we help support 126 youth during the holidays through generous donations from residents and local businesses. And that, that in and of itself takes up all of our administrative time in the months of November and December. I like to say we're a small but mighty staff. We are three and a half, but now four and a half full staff members, thanks to ARPA funds. And we do all of that work with four and a half people and some graduate interns. And so while we hope to continue this into 2025, which we will, we also hope to expand our clinical groups so that we touch all the public schools. We hope to expand our middle school programming. We hope to formalize our summer undergraduate internship because we had a successful intern this summer. And we hope to can expand our social media presence and our psychoeducation to youth and parents on mental health topics.
Thanks so much, Katie.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions or comments?
No, thanks to you and your staff though. I mean, you know, clearly, and this, this, this is to the entire group. I mean, this is quite the kaleidoscope of services that really makes Westwood such a special place. I mean, you know, whether you're need someone in crisis, or you just want to socialize and take a walk and read a book together, or you know, whatever it may be. I mean, this is part of what the full array of, of rich services that we offer as a community that make Westwood a special place. So thank you each and every one of you for your leadership and for the programs that you put on.
I want to echo that. I have to, and I want to. Katie, thank you so much. It's, it's clear how enmeshed you truly are, you and your staff are in the community. And I think we all know of folks who have been deeply touched and served by your office and how important those services are and for folks to know that you're there. So thank you for what you do every day. And I will just also thank all of you for what you provide to our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much for having us. And we just want to say, you know, this was a wonderful opportunity. And all of us, you know, are happy to talk anytime. If there, if you'd like any more updates at any point, just let us know. And we would be happy to talk with you, send you information, whatever gives you a picture of what we're up to.
You're on mute, Joe.
Thank you Danielle. Thanks Marion. I just want to say a few words at the end. First, full disclosure. During the Halloween costume contest that we had recently, that was my twin brother. That was not me there that day. So I just want to make sure that's clear with people. Rob, I think you hit the nail on the head when you said people don't know. And that's one of the reasons why I asked Chris if, when I was Chair, if we can have the department heads come in. Because, because I've been very impressed with what I've learned, heard and saw attending your meetings. I learned a lot before I was a select board member and after I was a select board member. You guys do a great job. And, and we are here to support you and do the best that we can. I realized the need for, to educate, and Chris agreed with me that, and Rob, you alluded to that, that the, that the folks don't know what great resources we have in this town. So thank you so much for taking time out, time away from your families to be here this evening. But I think it's very, very important. Katie, your group is very welcoming. I was amazed at your, the caseload that you have for the kids and the families. And Chris and I sat down, we had a long discussion on that and the select boards 100 beside, 100% behind supporting you, in fact, supporting all of you. So thank you so much for your work. Marion, Rob, I have discussed this, so we're there to support you. That's our job. And I want to thank you all so, so much for the hard work that you do. Thank you. Go home and have dinner. All right. Next, we have
Thank you everyone. Thank you.
Nancy, I think you're up for the, let me double check. Pan Mass Challenge. Nancy James.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So that was an outstanding update. I have to say that I've experienced many of the resources in town. So really appreciated hearing that. So in addition to my love for Westwood, absolutely passionate also, as you know, about the Pan Mass Challenge. Just a quick update from last year, the Pan Mass Challenge raised $75 million, which directly benefits Dana Farber, and that crossed the billion-dollar fundraising mark, which is a pretty sizable achievement. And to borrow Katie's words, we're part of the Western PMC Kids Ride contributed to that. So like Katie said, we're small but mighty. So I'm asking for approval or requesting approval to host the ride again on, it's our 16th annual ride on Sunday, May 18th. And I did request approval for a five-mile route and a one-mile route. Some parents had asked that we bring back the five-mile route. So I responded by asking them to commit to volunteering so that we can have the five-mile route. So I should know probably by February or March, it can't be, you know, the week of, we can, we can do that. So we, we need enough volunteers to make sure that it's a safe route. So if we don't have enough volunteers, we'll just proceed with the one-mile route. I will work with the police department and fire just to make sure that those dates work and that we have appropriate coverage along with DPW as we have in the past. So really appreciate the support. I say this every year, but we could not do it with, without the town just, you know, it's amazing to me how everyone just shows up. It's a little bit of a nail biter, but everyone comes through at the end. So it's great.
Thank you, Nancy. And I will, I will tell the others here that I had the tremendous pleasure of two years ago doing the five-mile route with, with the kids on this ride, which is a very, very noble cause. And Nancy, you do a great job. And you can put me down for a volunteer. I'm happy to do it. I thoroughly enjoyed it. And the best part was keeping my mouth shut and just listening to the kids chat as they rode their bikes along. It was, it was, it was fun. It was a great, it was, it was very rewarding for me, so.
They, they do love it and they understand why they're doing it. I mean, a lot are riding for, you know, their parents or grandparents. You know, it's great to honor pedal partners and it's even better to have the pedal partners come back as volunteers, right? The former pediatric cancer patients.
Yes, yes. No, it's a great time. Rob, any thoughts?
No, I mean, just, you know, fully support it. And good for you for asking for folks to come and volunteer if you want the five-mile route back. And that's part of what makes community too, is to be able to do some of these things. We need people to step up. And so good for you for asking, and I hope we're looking at a five-mile route and a one-mile route.
Thank you. Hope so too.
And I'll just add, thank you for your leadership on this, Nancy. Fully supported. And I'm happy to make a motion if there's no further discussion. I, I move that the Select Board approve the 16th Annual Pan Mass Challenge Kids Ride to be held on Sunday, May 18th, 2025, pending approval from the School Department and obtaining the appropriate permits from the Town Administrator's Office, Board of Health and Building Department.
And I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion? Roll call. Mary Ann?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Nancy, thanks so much for joining us tonight and thanks for the great job.
Thanks for having me. Have a good evening all. Thanks Nancy.
All right, next we have, this is my visual cue because Nora has come onto the screen. Next, we have Not Your Average Joes Incorporated doing business as Not Your Average Joes. 70 University Avenue, change to an existing alcohol license and entertainment license, change of hours. Nora, would you like to take this?
Sure. So I'm also joined by Brian Franchosi, who is
Very good Nora.
Not Your Average Joes Manager. So the the application tonight is for a change in hours on the alcohol CV license. The current hours for Not Your Average Joes are Monday through Saturday from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And from, on Sunday from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Not Your Average Joes would like to serve brunch on Saturdays as well as Sundays. So they're requesting a change in hours to add from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM on Saturday. So the new hours that they're requesting would be Monday through Friday from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And Saturday and Sunday from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM. So this has been reviewed by the Alcohol Review Committee and we recommend unanimously in favor of approval.
Thank you.
Thank you Nora. Brian, did you want to say anything at all?
No, it's great to be part of this town meeting and, and get the updates. And as someone helping to run a business here in this town, I appreciate all that you do. It's a pleasure to do business with, there and with you folks.
Well, you're a great, great establishment in our town. Do a great job. Rob, any thoughts or comments?
Just an observation that brunch must be doing well enough on Sunday that you want to expand it to Saturday, Brian. So we, we, we fully support the idea.
Thank you, Rob.
I'm not one to say no to brunch. Fantastic idea. And you, you're a great partner in town. So I'm happy to bring a motion if folks are ready.
Yep.
I hereby move that the Select Board approve a change of hours request for Not Your Average Joes Inc., DBA, Not Your Average Joes at 70 University Avenue to be open on Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, pending Alcohol Beverages Control Commission approval. Also to authorize the electronic signatures of the Select Board to be affixed to the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission Licensing Authority Certification Form, Section 12 License and Entertainment License.
And I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion? Roll call. Mary Ann?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Motion carries. Thank you Nora.
Thank you Brian. Yep.
Thank you.
Next, we have the financial update FY26 budget from Stephanie McManus. Sorry, here.
I'm here.
Oh, yeah, there you are. Hi Stephanie. Would you be so kind?
Yes, great. I'm just going to share my screen if that's okay and do a presentation.
And welcome Cheryl for joining us.
Okay, so today I'm going to walk through a financial update as it relates to the FY26 budget. It'll be mostly focused on capital and then also just a little peek into our operating budget and how that's going so far. You were presented with the capital budget in early December, sort of the first look overview of that. It was presented by Molly. So thank you for that Molly. This is pretty similar to that presentation, but there have been some updates and changes. So I wanted to walk through it one more time and also field any questions you had. So just as a reminder, the Select Board has supported continued reinvestment in the town's assets and infrastructure. That's what we call our capital budget. Our articles related to capital are built each year from the submissions that are included in the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. That's a document that is collected each year. We start the process in August and department heads submit any requests they have, five-year capital improvement plans, larger projects. It's consolidated into one document and then distributed. So that was distributed this year in November. It's also posted on the town's website. So all the projects listed in that book are sort of what we call a wish list item, right? It's all the, the projects that are needed that departments would like to see happen over the next five years. We then have a process where we go back and forth with the department heads, figure out which project should be recommended to move forward and sort of how they should be consolidated into different categories. Those categories end up being the capital budget articles that move forward to town meeting. Could either be by funding source, by type. So that's sort of what I'll go over tonight. This first slide is just an overview of that, of where that all landed. We are continuing a level of capital investment specific to maintaining town and school building and infrastructure. It's what we call our base capital. This is important to ensure safe and efficient capital equipment. It's, it's good to be consistent through investment on this base capital and sort of keep up with that infrastructure, with that equipment. And then we are continuing our efforts for additional funding beyond the base for important projects that have arisen. So for the base capital, that is continued this year. Again, the recommendation is to fund it with free cash. On the municipal side, the capital article right now is 1,525,000. I'll walk through that. The school capital improvements is 1,140,000. That is an increase over what the current FY25 allocation is for the base capital as well as what it has been for the last six years. It's an total increase of about 312,000 for both of those articles over FY25. There is then the additional capital budget, which is funded with free cash, meals and hotel tax, and then under other funding sources, depending on which article it is. So the appropriation for these capital articles is being done as it has been in prior years. We have one additional capital improvement article for 100, 1,252,000, which will be funded with meals and hotel tax revenue. Another additional capital improvement, capital article for 920,000, which is funded with free cash. Though that's a little bit different from what you saw in December. At that point, it was sort of one article. It was on the larger end. It was funded with both free cash and meals and hotel tax. Since then, there's been an additional added item from the School Department, and we have split that into two articles in funding it, one with meals and hotel tax and one with free cash. Our sewer capital improvement, that's $75,000. That's funded with sewer retained earnings. That has its own dedicated funding source. And then other capital improvements, 1,035,000 funded with ambulance receipts and then some cemetery trust funds. And then we also have an additional capital article related to sewer that would require borrowing. It's our MWRRA. We call it a no-interest loan. So that's a program that the MWRA offers to communities. It is 125,000 of that would be a zero-interest loan. The other portion would be a grant from that program. It's a great program that we've participated in for a number of years now. And you've seen the slide a number of times. I know it is a little bit different this time because this is the, sort of the chart that we have for our base capital for school municipal budget, capital articles. It's important, like I said, to maintain our assets, buildings, infrastructures, equipment. We have financial policies that say we should dedicate a certain amount of funds to this program. We, we have been close to meeting the target for a number of years. So now with this proposed increase to the base capital articles, we're getting closer to that financial policy, which at this point is about 2.9 million. We've made steady progress in increasing it. And I think this is an, an important time. We do have the free cash. I know I presented this back in August. Free cash was certified higher than has been in a number of years. We have sort of what we're tracking to use as, as recommended for this budget. And I do feel like it could fit within the current parameters of where we are with free cash. So this increase is based on what we can fit in this year. And then just important to remember, year over year, moving forward, we reevaluate that every year. So we look at this number in sort of what we have for free cash for that year, what we think we can fit in, what we feel comfortable in doing that. This is, these, these articles year over year change a bit. It's just vehicles and ongoing programs that we have that we would like to invest in on the capital side.
So Stephanie, can I just touch a question there?
Yeah, sure.
So, you know, obviously with it being level funded for the last six years, some of that purchasing power has eroded with inflation. Is it, you know, can it be expected that this will be the ask going forward on a level, you know, level funded for base capital? And is that a sustainable thing? Because we noted sort of the one-time excess, if you will, of available free cash. But you know, if it returns to historic levels, how would we address this going forward?
That's a good question. So certified right now, we have about 14.3 million in free cash. This budget, as is presented in today, today's terms, we're planning to utilize about 4.6 million of that. So that does leave a sustainable amount right now for the, to support this increase. And then as I see it for the next year or so, moving forward. If for some reason we get to a point where that free cash is dipping, we're, we're using more for a project that we hadn't foreseen. We're not getting sort of the turnback that we usually do. We could always evaluate in that year. This is not, you know, a permanent increase. It could always be evaluated year over year if we think that this is not sustainable moving forward.
Thank you.
So with those additional capital articles I just referenced, the, the one, there are two of them, one being funded with free cash, one with meals and hotel tax. Those combined total 2.17 million. There's always an effort to fund capital that's either been deferred for a number of years or larger items that don't fit easily within what we call those base capital articles. This is sort of just, um, history of what has been funded in the prior years through those articles. And then specific to FY twenty-six, they include generators to increase safety at, um, to increase safety at emergency cooling and warming centers. It's two of our locations, the library and COA. Improvements to the library, the main branch, technology to improve, um, meeting accessibility such as hybrid meetings, uh, financial software upgrade that is used by both the town and school departments, town hall improvements, and then an electrical upgrade at the Sheehan School. Just some current balances to give you sort of perspective when we talk about using these different funding sources. You know, what does that mean? What do we currently have in those funds? Can we afford it? Can we sustain this? Um, so we just went over this a little bit, Rob, but free cash. So as of July first, I was certified at the fourteen point three. For, uh, per our financial policies, the free cash balance needs to be maintained at four percent of general fund operating budget and at a debt service. So for FY twenty-five, that amount is about four point two million. So as you can see, that gives us definitely some wiggle room. We are recommending, um, using free cash for a number of different items this bu- uh, this budget cycle. However, it is within our policies and sort of what we're recommending, what we think we can sustain moving forward. So that is its own sort of dedicated funding source for those articles. The meals and hotel tax, I'm sure you remember, but at the November twenty seventeen town meeting, residents approved establishing a special purpose fund to withhold all of the revenue that comes in with that meals and hotel tax, until it can be appropriated by future town meetings. Um, funds have been used by town meeting for capital projects, not operating budgets. That's important to note. This is sort of a fund that is set aside. Obviously, it's not guaranteed revenue. It fluctuates from year to year. We get these amounts and the Department of Revenue actually collects this revenue for us, and then we get quarterly payments from them. Um, those payments have been coming in pretty steady over the last couple of years, thankfully after COVID. Um, but it's not, uh, you know, guaranteed funding source. So we do put it aside into a separate fund and use it specifically for capital items beyond the base. The current balance in that account is two point four million dollars. Just as a reminder, there was nothing allocated at the last town meeting for those funds. There are also other dedicated funding sources that we use for capital articles. That includes ambulance receipts. Um, the current unreserved balance in that account is one point six six million. Sewer retained earnings, um, that's sort of similar on the sewer side. It's sort of like their free cash. So for FY twenty-four, the final unreserved fund balance for that was two point nine million. And then cemetery perpetual care receipts. We don't talk about this often. Um, it's a trust fund. You know, when rates aren't doing great, this fund sort of isn't even worth mentioning. However, the last couple of years, we've had pretty good rates. So the receipts in this fund cannot be expended, but the earnings on them can be. So the current balance of the expendable portion of that fund is sixty thousand dollars as of, um, October thirty-first. And I'll sort of go through now how we've broken up these capital articles, um, for each project and then what the funding sources and how it sort of ties back to what I just reviewed. So for the municipal base capital article, um, that's that one million five hundred and twenty-five thousand I referenced. This is all funded with free cash. Um, I I'm not planning on individually going through these items unless you have specific questions. I know it was sort of in the document that was set out detailing, like I said, it's also posted online detailing a description of each of these. But this is sort of the normal year-over-year projects that we do. You know, technology that we replace, um, radio infrastructure, energy efficiency, different vehicles. So I'll pause for a minute in case there's any questions, otherwise I'll just move on to the next one. So this is the-
Excuse me, Steph, I have one question, uh, back up two slides. On the generators, didn't we get some money from Senator Rush's office or Paul McMurtry's office to help with that?
Yes, that is correct. Um, there was funding requested at the last town meeting that was not approved. We were able to get a two hundred thousand dollar, um, earmark grant, which was a great thing that funds two of the four buildings that we were looking to invest generators in. So this is just the remaining amount requested for the two that we did not receive funding for, the COA and the library.
And that was a grant that you were involved with, is that correct?
Yep, the 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 town reached out and requested funds from, um, that office, and we were able to to procure them, which was great.
My understanding was you reached out.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, um, so moving on, this is-
Just to be clear, when you talk about the library, is that the main library or is that down at, uh, the branch?
No, great question. Thank you for the clarification. It is the main library, yes. And that building actually does not currently have a generator. This would be, um, an investment in that. Uh, it's it's a great location to have, right now, our main go-to for cooling and heating center is the COA. Um, that generator is twenty-plus years old. It's it's, um, it came on with the original building, so whenever that would be, that's over twenty years old. So that needs to be replaced. And then having the library sort of as another option for a warming cooling center would be a great location, if you think about it. Who wouldn't want to go to the library and hang out there for a while? Um, so giving a generator to that building, um, for the first time. Any other questions on the, before I move on to municipal?
No, thank you, Steph.
Yep. So on the school side, this is just a list, and I'm sure they'll get more into this as they, um, present their capital budget moving forward. This is their base capital article. It, there's nothing really unique here. Each year, they have the same types of categories. They just sort of evaluate what they need for that year and, um, break up that bucket of money into those different categories. Any questions on this? So for the first additional capital article, this one is funded with meals and hotel tax. So the total amount is one million two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. And just as a reminder, um, the amount in that account right now is two point four million, so enough to cover this. Actually, we already checked the first one off the list. So we just went over a little bit, the gen- replace, generator replacement at those two buildings, um, for the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand. The lighting system at the library for three hundred thousand. That lighting system, um, came onboard, obviously, when the, um, building was constructed. There is, oh, there is currently a lot of issues going on with that system. Um, the building has lost all control over the power there. Sorry, someone just jumped in. Um, they're unable to make changes. What the lights are on right now is what they stay on. You can't turn them off, change them. So the system really needs to be replaced. Um, also as part of this, which is another positive, is all of the lighting will be switched over to energy-efficient LED fixtures. So that will help tremendously on the electricity bill on that side of things. So it's not just replacing the system that is currently non-functioning. It's also upgrading all of the fixtures to be more energy efficient. Um, and then as that comes along, hopefully looking at ever-source rebates and things that we can get for that. The DPW garages, this is just, um, investments in improving things at both the Carby Street location and, um, uh, the field name just went right out of my head. Mars, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Um, so it's improvements to those, um, multiple garages throughout town. The additional study room project, the library, is actually great that our library director was here earlier, talking about how the rooms they have right now are heavily utilized and always booked. So adding an additional study room to the library. Uh, meeting room technology, this is what I was talking about with the hybrid meeting space. So making technology investments into those locations to make hybrid meetings an option. And then the last one is the town and school financial enterprise software. This is a project that started, um, getting funding back, and I believe it was twenty nineteen. There was two allocations already into this, um, that's sitting in an account right now. I'm assuming it sort of got put on the back burner through COVID. Um, we're picking that back up. Our current financial software system is completely unsupported by the company. Um, you know, we can't make updates to it. It's it's just time that this be replaced. So we're asking for an amount to match the amount that we currently have in an account. We've started receiving quotes already from different companies. Um, if that, that's a solid number for now, if we needed to tweak that moving forward over the month, over the next month or so, I'll update the board, but that'll bring the total amount, if this four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars was approved, it would match the four hundred and seventy-five thousand we currently have sitting in an account in order to, um, make very necessary, um, improvements to our financial software system. And like I said, that'll go to support both the town and the school.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. How old, um, is our software system?
That's a great question. I can look into it for you. I don't know the last time. I will, I will get that answer for you and send out, send out an email update. I don't have it in front of me. What year?
I believe it is about twenty years.
It's it's been a while. It's been a little while.
Our software, that's, that's a dinosaur.
And you know, it it's, it's not just that it's old. It's just unfortunately, moving forward, the company we currently have that supports, that supports, uh, the software could say they're just completely getting rid of it in three months and not having a plan in place. Cause that switch over takes a year plus. So you want to be ahead of it, sort of investing now, making the change on our end, on our terms before the program we currently have, the company who says, oh, you know what, we're getting rid of it in three months and you have to switch over. So, um, yeah, this is, this is a long time coming and and much needed.
Stephanie, I would, I know Rob and Mary Ann would agree with me, but I would put that at the top of the list. It's long overdue.
Any other questions at all on this? Okay. So the other, um, additional capital article, this one is funded with free cash, nine hundred and twenty thousand. And that was included in, um, the estimate I I stated earlier, about four point five million is being utilized in this year's budget proposal. Um, so this includes a town hall, um, renovation. So this would allow for what we call the lower level at town hall, um, to be renovated to include meeting space, internal meeting space, some flex space, um, a dedicated mailroom. And then also an important part of this would be, um, updating the heating fixtures a bit too, to help with the heating at at town hall. The roof replacement, uh, the current roof at town hall is over twenty years old. Uh, definitely needs to be replaced. It's it's within our, what we call our roof replacement, um, plan. Our facilities director keeps a great plan of how old different roofs are and when they should be replaced. So we've known about this for a number of years. It's been in the capital budget. It's just coming along, and and this is now the year to do it. And then the electrical upgrade, um, at the Sheehan School, the schools will talk more about this as we go forward, um, with budget meetings and at FinCom. But, um, there's an electrical upgrade that needs to happen at the Sheehan School, so they've requested that be part of this budget article. So that brings the total, like I said, to nine hundred and twenty thousand. Any questions on this? Sewer improvements. So this is, this is the regular sewer article we have year over year. It's funded with sewer retained earnings. It's dedicated funding source. Um, seventy-five thousand for stormwater. This is to investigate and repair drainage infrastructure within the town that's found to be non-compliant or non-functioning. Um, so the DPW initiates projects to investigate and repair this infrastructure on a yearly basis. So this is a program that happens every year. Seventy-five thousand dollars is allocated from that account. For the sewer, um, capital borrowing article, I I talked a little bit about this earlier. This is the I and I program that the MWRA runs. It's a great program. Um, a hundred and twenty-five thousand of that will be a zero interest loan. The rest will come as a grant straight from the MWRA. And this helps, um, our inflow and infiltration and inflow reduction. Um, they do, the DPW does a great job. Every other year, they'll get investigative money and then do programs and upgrades to our system through this, through this funding source. And then the last, I believe, yeah, the last article here is other revenue sources. So these are three projects that are being funded with specific revenue sources. I touched on this a little bit earlier, but it's cemetery and ambulance receipts. So this is a fifty thousand dollars for a tractor for our cemetery division to help maintain our cemetery. There is rescue upgrade and replacement. This is an annual year-over-year, um, usual allocation for our fire department. It's funded with ambulance receipts, because it's specific to the ambulance, for thirty-five thousand dollars. And then a replacement of a fire engine, um, at nine hundred and fifty thousand. This amount is a little bit higher than the last time you would see in the budget. Um, it's still what we're calling a stock vehicle, where it's, it's not, um, it it's sort of off the lot. However, cost went up. The vehicle that they were originally looking at was sold. Um, so we're now updating that amount to be nine hundred and fifty thousand, also funded with ambulance receipts. And the balance in the ambulance receipt account is one point six six million right now, so enough to cover these two items. And then there's sixty thousand dollars currently in that portion of the cemetery trust that I explained earlier. So again, enough to cover that as well.
So Steph, with with the, the, all of the articles that you've talked about and then the base article being, if I remember right, you were saying it was an increase of three hundred and twelve thousand, right?
Yes.
You're twenty-five. I think that was a little bit lower than what was originally published in the budget book that you sent to us. Does that mean that the, there's been either something cut from the list or something that's changed on the list? Like what, because I think it was like a seventy-five, seventy thousand dollar di- difference from where I think I saw it at the budget book timeframe to now.
Okay, I I'm, I'm going to get, we, so yes, we go back and forth with the department heads, and we're always saying, you know, can you get an actual updated quote on this? Can this be reduced? Do you have another idea for sort of, um, how our lower, how to lower the cost of a certain item? And one thing that did come up, if I remember correctly, so the COA was originally looking for, um, a wheel- wheelchair accessible van, which is more like they've bought in the past one of those larger vehicles for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. They did a great job of reevaluating, going back, seeing what they actually needed. And they're gonna get more of, I I guess I like it to a minivan type thing, that's wheelchair accessible, smaller type vehicle. So that amount reduced down to sixty-two thousand in their request. So that's probably what it was.
Okay.
Anything else on any of those?
Stephanie, you might not be able to answer, but I think Todd can. I think people should know that that inflow infiltration program, those funds actually help us save money on our charges to the MWRA. Is that correct, Todd?
Yeah, to some degree, Joe. It's tough to get a true measurable on it, but it does definitely reduce the amount of infiltration, be it water into the system, which then is obviously was what we get charged for through the MWRA.
Yeah. Thank you, Todd. Thanks, Stephanie.
Yep. All right. And then separate from those sort of capital articles, there are additional budget articles included in the FY twenty-six budget. Um, the liabilities and reserve portion. So this is an annual allocation that we requested town meeting. The first is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars funded with free cash to our stabilization fund. Will keep, which keeps us on target with our financial policies. Then there's also an additional article for, um, a contribution to the OPEV, the Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund, which also keeps us on target with required funding, uh, to fund that unfunded liability. That amount is increased year over year by twenty-five thousand. The amount, um, we're putting forward in FY twenty-six is one point five nine million. There is then an additional, um, budget article for a senior tax relief, um, via the Age of the Elderly Fund. So this is a recommendation that we allocate three hundred thousand dollars to that, um, fund. This was done previously at annual town meeting in twenty twenty-two. Um, that amount in twenty-two was funded with free cash. This is the recommendation for this amount would also be funded with free cash. And I can neither get into that a little bit now or later when we go through the articles. I don't know if there's any specific questions on that. Um, so this is a, this is a tax relief program that the town has had in place for a number of years now. It's a great program. Um, it helps approximately forty-five to fifty-five senior residents each year. Um, and the purpose of this funding would be for continued distribution from that fund to the town's senior recipients.
Stephanie, is that, um, program still, um, meeting the requests of all qualified residents?
It is, yes. Um, it has traditionally been funded with donations as well as, you know, in the past, there's been a match from the Select War Reserve Fund. Um, but that amount that was put in in twenty twenty-two has really helped sustain that program over the last couple of years. So we're just hoping to replenish that with one more allocation. And it does, it is able to meet, um, requests that come in, thankfully. It's a great program.
Thank you.
Steph, before we get into the, the fixed cost and the-
Yeah.
There is a, a question in the Q and A. I don't know if we want-
Oh, sorry, I can't see it with my screen share.
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to let you know that it was there.
Okay. Would you like me to look at it? Let me see.
I, I can read it if you'd like.
Why don't you, Chris?
Sure. Okay, thank you.
No problem. It's from Kathy Wallace, two eighty-three Farm Lane. How many times did the town offer warming centers in twenty twenty-four? What was the power out during those events? What were the hours in the, and what building was used? Uh, how many times did the town offer cooling centers in twenty twenty-four? What was the power out during those events? What were the hours uh and what building was used? Why do we need a generator at Wentworth Hall? So um I'm happy to take the first two sections. As far as um we have offered, so we haven't offered warming centers. We haven't offered official cooling centers. What we have encouraged people to do is to go to the main library when the, when the library is open. One of the challenges that we've had is offering it as official cooling center or an official warming center when that facility doesn't have a generator poses as a problem. So one of the things that we are looking at is the main library to get that generator. One of the benefits of having a library as a cooling center or a warming center, there are other activities for people to do. Part of the emergency preparedness work that we're doing as we're updating our plan, we've also identified as far as Wentworth Hall, having a second location on the opposite side of town as a second emergency operation center in the event we could not use our primary one, which is the Gillette Meeting Room. Case in point, what happened, not this past December, but the December before that, we had the power outage. We almost went dark. Uh, we were about ninety, sixty to ninety minutes away from going dark. And we were fortunate enough to get word through MEMA uh that got a generator from Eversource to come in to power um the EOC or the police building. The police building does have a generator. It is tested. Ironically enough, that generator was tested two weeks prior to the event, but yet it still failed. So in the event that we had a situation on the High Street side of town and we had to open up an EOC, we now have identified Wentworth Hall, once we have a generator in place as that backup EOC. Also, the generator would also help with the pumps that we have in the, in Wentworth Hall, moving things up to the main lines from the lower level. So if there was a power failure, the generators would kick on and also provide service to those buildings or to that building.
Yeah, Chris, I know, you know, obviously we haven't needed warming centers. The last couple of years have been pretty warm through the wintertime, but I do remember, I think it was two summers ago, we had an extreme heat event where we i- if I thought we were, did we offer or did we open someplace as a
I believe, I, I don't know the year, but we did have some, um, we did open up the COA. We did not have a lot of people attend um or to uh come to the COA, but we did offer the COA. And the COA does have a generator. That's why that was one of the municipal buildings that we've identified. So if we're fortunate enough to get the generator um article passed, we'll have one, um, we'll have one with the, the work that Stephanie did to get one for Wentworth Hall. We'll also have one at the main library. And going forward, this is certainly something we'd like to talk to the board and the PBC about future municipal projects having generators part of that construction.
I have a question, Chris. Did you say Wentworth Hall, is that on a sewer pump ejector?
I don't want to say yes to that. Um, I just, because I want to just talk to Jimmy, but there is, uh, Todd, I don't know if you know exactly, but there is, we do have a situation there that when power goes, Jimmy does have to have someone go into that building uh to connect something and maybe the sewer pump ejector, but there is some type of ejector that's in the lower level that we have to bring up to the main lines. Oh, Nora, if you know the answer?
I believe there's a sump pump. So that building, as you recall, it's a very deep foundation, so they could have a full height ceiling and it's built in a um a blasted out area of ledge. So when water gets into the area around the building, the sump pump is very active and I think it runs fairly frequently. So a generator will help to assure that the, the water is cons- consistently flowing out of the building. Right now, if we have a power outage, then we need temporary generators to go in there to pump that water out.
Thanks, Nora. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Nora.
I, I just want to add that I'm really glad we're having this discussion. Um, I, I, I think it really underscores how important our generators are for a number of reasons. Um, specifically including emergency management and meeting the needs of our residents during emergencies. So I'm glad we, we had this discussion. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you for that information, Chris. Um, and, and just to clarify too, so the Wentworth Hall one that was just being discussed, that is being funded with the earmark grant that came in. And the article that's on for this would be for the library and the COA. Okay, um, sorry, I should say, any more questions on the capital portion of anything? Before I move on to sort of the operating budget, just touching on that a little bit. So just some updates. Um, we'll be focusing more so on the fixed cost um operating budget. So um the current estimated increase to the total fixed cost budget, and this was presented a bit back um in November, when we were sort of getting initial information on where we were on certain things. The current budget is estimated as an approximate uh eight percent increase over FY twenty-five, which equates to one point seven nine million. The pension assessment um is still estimated at seven point three million, an increase of nine percent over FY twenty-five. And I included this time just some history over the last couple of years of what that increase has been year over year. You know, it was five point two in twenty-three, one point seven in twenty-four, barely one percent in FY twenty-five. So that amount, as you can see, is clearly much larger than it has been in recent years. Um, I touched on this a bit and I won't go into too much more detail, but it's the Norfolk County Retirement System had a new actuary come on and they changed um all the assumptions in one year. Um, so it was a huge hit, not just to Westwood. It's an, it's all the communities that participate in that retirement system in Norfolk County. So um because of the dramatic increase, they've stepped back and only um voted for FY twenty-six for the pension assessment and this fin- funding schedule. Usually we know a couple of years out for the funding schedule as well. So right now, um and this is still a preliminary assessment. So usually we get in December a letter stating our, our actual assessment for twenty-six that has not formally come out yet. So it's still a preliminary number, but this is the information we've received so far that still needs to be finalized. So just wanted to highlight that that's um a much larger increase than it has been over past years. We did receive some updated guidance from the GIC regarding, regarding health insurance. If you remember when I originally presented this in November, just talks of what were happening at that point, we were estimating an eight point five percent increase. We've now been given some um more information on the range that they're anticipating for the rates. Um, so we have increased that estimate to ten percent, uh, an increase of ten percent over FY twenty-five. That's approximately an eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar increase. So the updated information from the GIC will come in, in uh late February, early March. So I will definitely be updating you as, as those things come along. Um, previous year's increases over the past three years have been about seven in twenty-three, five point seven in twenty-four, eight point three in twenty-five. This is a budget recently that has um seen some pretty big increases. Um, so hoping for the best and we'll update you if that comes down at all. But right now, like I said, the guidance we have is more like ten percent. And then still waiting on other pieces of information that, you know, we have no control over. We say this is part of the fixed cost budget. Uh, the Blue Hills assessment comes in. That's based on the number of students attend, uh, attending the vocational school and then the MWRA assessment. Um, so hopefully get updates for you late January, early February and those two items as well.
So this is a beast that is just somewhat untamed at the moment because if you're saying that, you know, we're, we've doubled what the fixed cost increase was from last year to this year. And as that happens, it's growing as a percentage of the overall pie. I think this is about, last year it was maybe twenty percent. Now it's twenty-one percent. With this increase, it probably goes to twenty-two percent. So each time it has a disproportional um growth, right, of nine, ten percent. That puts enormous pressure on the remaining operating budget, which I know you're getting ready to go through. I mean, you know, this, this is, is one that is really difficult because it's not, it's outside of our control. We just have to this is, it is what it is, right? And, and I, I mean, I know that, that I'm not part of budget steering right now, but I've got to believe you guys are having some tough discussions.
Yeah, that's correct. We have been talking about that and, and you know, Westwood's not unique to this. This is happening to a lot of communities right now. It's these large increases that we really have no control over. Um, there is a budget gap right now. You know, what we're looking at for our estimated um expenditure side is just um growing so much faster than we have on our revenue side. So I'm just having to talk about options for how to deal with that. That's correct. Yep.
And, and to follow up on that stuff, what if anything can we do to try to confirm that pension assessment?
Yeah, so I'm in constant communication with the retirement system. Um, I'm anticipating the letters will come out pretty soon um to can, to firm that number up. Um, but that's, it's pretty much just a winning game. It has to, it has to come, it's the pair act letter, it's get sent out is what we call it. So it's just giving the commu-, it's not just Westwood. It's all communities in that retirement system, just waiting for that official letter to come out and be finalized.
If memory has it, you caught a mistake that they made or something like that. This was originally going to be like one point two as opposed to the six hundred that it is.
It was about, yes, it was a, going to be about a million dollar increase on their original. Again, it was just because of this new actuary that came in. Um, they changed all the assumptions and sort of the funding schedule that they were presenting for communities at that time, a couple of months ago. It just seemed really out of whack, so questioned it and they um did have a mistake in it. And so they came back with the updated funding schedule and they have voted it. And that might seem odd that they already voted it, but the letters haven't come out, but um they had their actuarial report posted on their website. The schedule is technically voted. We just, I, I don't like to say it's finalized until we get that formal letter from them. Um, so on the municipal budget side, and, and just to step back for a minute, so we start this process in late October, early November, asking department heads to submit what they're requesting for their expenses. We go through salaries um based on what we have for current contracts and all that. And we put together the municipal budget. Um, so, and we work through that. It, you know, it's a process. We go, the initial requests come in. We see what we can sort of fit in. We put it all together and then we look for any areas that we can reduce. Um, possibly having other funding sources to fund either positions or expenses. Um, and sort of that's the process we are in the middle of right now, but I did want to give you sort of an initial update on this. Um, the budget requests came in and what we were looking at initially was about a six point one increase over FY twenty-five. Um, we've continued to review that. We've gotten that down to a five point one five. Um, but still working through the process of seeing what we can do to get that number down lower. Um, the, there were requests um that new positions that came in above, above this budget that I'm discussing right now, that I just wanted to bring to the attention of the boards that they're aware. We have public safety staffing requests from both the police and fire departments. Um, the library requested a children's librarian. The conservation commission requested a recording secretary and then youth and filming services. They have a counselor that's currently funded with ARPA that we were going to attempt to, you know, fold into our regular salaries funded with taxation, but we, um, that is going to have to be another year of ARPA funded position, which we do have funding for. So part of when we talk about other funding sources that we can possibly come up with to, to fund salaries or expenses, that's an example of that. Um, these pies are just sort of reminding everyone that the majority of that municipal budget is made up of DPW and public safety, sixty-seven percent. And then when, in the overall pie, the majority of it, eighty percent is salaries. So it's people. Um, they're the ones that provide the services. Um, they're the real base of this budget. And then normally when I'm presenting the operating budget, I sort of bring together the three big pieces that entail that. That's the municipal, the fixed costs, and then the school department budget. Um, we don't have that number yet, which is typical this time of year. The superintendent will be presenting their operating budget to the school committee on January sixteenth. So at your January twenty-second meeting, I will have much more information on sort of where we are with the overall operating budget, what that we call at this time, you know, a budget gap looks like, what we're trying to um do to, to bring that gap down, to come up with what we always say, we have to have a balanced budget, right? When it goes, when it's presented and moves forward. So how we're going to plan to balance that. Um, so I have much more detail for you at your January twenty-second meeting. Oh, actually I should say, any questions on this?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, not, I know we don't know the school side of it, but if we just look at this, and if, if memory serves, if fixed cost is twenty, twenty-one percent, you know, the municipal side is twenty-two, twenty-three percent. So we're just under fifty percent of the budget. With these two things that you're presenting alone, one of them that we don't have control over is up eight percent right now. We're at five percent on the municipal side. Th- this math isn't working. So there's got to be, you know, things like current openings that are going to be left vacant or, you know, some other hard discussions that are going to have to happen between now and when we get to presenting a balanced budget. I mean, that, that you know, th- even if you assumed that at two and a half percent, I don't think the school acc- accounting for fifty-five percent of the budget is, is going to make the math work. So this is going to be, we're going to be making some hard decisions here.
That's right.
Rob, I don't, I don't disagree. We're very cognizant of that fact, but Stephanie, I just wanted to go on the record, as far as the public safety staffing. Uh, I think the select board was pretty clear about trying to get an additional four firefighters so that we could have two ambulances, one on the High Street Station, one in the Islington Station. Um, I think that's very, very important. Really ask that you take a long, hard look at trying to fund those two additional positions because
Oh, how are you going to do that? What are, what are you going to cut?
I'm not going to answer that.
Unless you're saying right now, you're looking for an override.
You know what, Rob? I'm asking Stephanie.
Oh, I see. Well, I'm having a conversation about the budget. We're having a conversation about the budget.
Got it.
I'm going to move on to the next slide unless anyone has anything further, if that's okay?
I guess, I'm curious as to what you're going to do with that request. Because I don't know how you, at this point, try to fund something when that's pushing the, the gap wider than where it's going. So
No, I, Rob, I get what you're saying. I'm just asking Stephanie when she takes a look at this, because there, she's not putting down the specifics on that public safety staffing request. I'm just putting in a vote for, I think the select board supported having uh the fire staffing increase and having two ambulances. That's all I'm saying.
So the specifics on the public safety staffing is, um, the police department requested a third lieutenant for a hundred and forty-five thousand, and then the fire department requested two additional firefighters, which base salary would be about a hundred and sixty-five thousand um and plus benefits for those positions. If, if the chair is asking, it's the select board's budget, if um the direction is to try to fit any of those in, I can look at that and come back with what that would mean. If that's the guidance I'm being given.
Well, I'm not sure the select board has a unified position on this, Stephanie. I'm just advocating that uh, the two additional firefighter paramedics will save lives. That's all I'm saying. It'd be nice to have an ambulance on the side of town.
Okay.
And, I'll just add, you know, we, we are all on record uh for wanting to increase that staffing. Um, and I think we all remain committed to it. That said, um, we've got to um balance the budget. We've got to provide services for the entirety of town. So, um, and, and for reasons that you will make clear with the rest of this uh presentation staff, um, we've got a real challenge uh to meet uh the services that we're providing now this year. So I, I think that sums up to some degree where we are understanding that there are still moving parts that we've not yet been able to confirm.
So for next steps, uh, just along those lines, January, like I said, your January twenty-second meeting, I'll have a lot more information on the overall rounded out operating budget and exactly where we are with that budget gap and any sort of recommendations for trying to close it. Um, that'll include local revenue sources where we are when I'm um projecting or recommending at that time. And then just a reminder that the state budget, so what we call state aid that comes in as a revenue source will be previewed at the M- Will be previewed at the MMN meeting by the governor, which is scheduled for January twenty third. So it's after your twenty second meeting, but then, like I usually do, I'll come back at your next meeting with a one, two slide update on exactly where we fall with that. Also, continue to review the capital budget articles, if there's any recommendations you have or anything you want tweaked. Continued review of the FY twenty six municipal budget requests, the base budget, and then any requested new positions or programs. Present details on the FY twenty six proposed municipal budget and operating budget, and this is all looking towards. The select board coming out with the proposed budget documents. That date is targeted for February first, and that includes. Three pieces, which is the municipal, the overall, and then the capital articles. And then this proposed budget will be presented to FIDCOM on February eleventh for the first time. And we'll just continue ongoing discussions with budget steering, which has been going well so far. And then also a reminder, we prepare article one and two, which is FY twenty five supplemental budgets. In usually the March timeframe, so continuing to update you on it as soon as we get any information on that. And that's the presentation I have for tonight. If there's any questions at all, I'm happy to answer them.
So there's one thing I just wanted to talk about. We were, as part of the shared and fixed costs, one of the things that I was talking to Joe about was. When it came to brush and recycling. So I just wanna share with the board some of the work that Todd has done on that. Through the budget that he has submitted. He submitted a budget based off of ten collections. We currently have ten collections. He also has some anticipated. Industry increases that may take place, including fuel and prevailing wage. However, he has discussed. With our provider regarding a contract extension, a way to bring in an eleventh brush collection. Within the budget that has been submitted. That being said, he, so that could be supported. It's not finalized yet. Todd is still working his magic. Still working with waste management on this extension of this extension, contract extension. This does mean that, that some of those anticipated increases, whether it's fuel or prevailing wage. If they were to come in, unfortunately, as expected or planned. We may need some type of adjustment mid-year. Todd tends to, Todd does a very good job putting the budget together, trying to stay within that budget. He still has some conversations that needs to be had with our vendor for this contract extension. He's here tonight to answer any specific questions. But we could fit that eleventh collection in, that eleventh collection could be during the month of July. If that's something that you would like to pursue.
Clarification? When you say there may be an adjustment needed if the adjustments come in as planned or expected? What does that mean? Are you saying that we would need to find a funding source for that eleventh pickup?
So if the current budget was not able to support, if we had the, that audit, that was. That was discussed last year, the recycling audit, if that were to hit. If the, if the budget couldn't absorb that, we would have to come back to the board to have a conversation. Now, again, the contract is not finalized yet. Todd is here to answer any specific questions you may have. But I do wanna thank Todd for the work that he's done thus far to get the contract in the, in the place it is today. That would allow for this eleventh collection. Again, it's not finalized, it's certainly. His objective as well as my objective to get this contract extension finalized and signed as soon as possible. But I do wanna thank him for the work that he's done thus far and to let everyone know that we could do that eleventh collection with that, with the understanding of what. What we, the contingencies would not happen that much, but Todd?
Yeah, Rob, to answer your question too, I mean, basically, what has been submitted to Stephanie thus far. Was strictly an FY twenty six budget that had some solid contingency built in there. The submitted budget did not incorporate a tenth, I'm sorry, an eleventh pickup. But it does have contingency to cover us for, say, for example, the prevailing wage rates for the drivers go up, which it did. Actually, two or three years ago significantly. So there's contingency to cover that. As Chris mentioned, we are subject to another recycling audit if our contamination rate. Is elevated like it was in the pre, during the previous audit, of which we did not get charged because that was some. Criteria that we had negotiated in, that we had almost like a test audit to see where we were at. And then a follow-up audit, which we have not had yet. But if that, if that audit comes in at the seventeen and a half percent contamination rate that we just found out we were at. We're subject to, say, twenty five hundred dollars a month until that is corrected. So there's contingency built into the submittal that I, that I submitted to Stephanie. So I guess what Chris is saying too is technically on paper, there is no. Eleventh collection built into this budget. There's a significant amount of contingency, however. To cover us for those prevailing wage rate increase possible, for the possible recycling contamination fee. I mean, I guess you could dive into that contingency monies right now, but it would take away from that protection. And our ability to not have to approach Stephanie down the road and say. You know, we, we just got subject to these fees or these increases. I mean, that's something that the board would have to discuss. On the back end of everything. We are in the process of negotiating with waste management. And I, we just received a proposal on December twenty third, and I apologize, I haven't had time to review it thoroughly enough. But I did have a good chance this morning to take a peek at it, and they are offering some solid incentives. And, and what they're offering and what they're proposing does look very favorable to us. And I'm hopeful that within probably the next couple of months, at the very, very latest. I'll have a great proposal from waste management, perhaps bring representation from waste management before the board. And we can have the board take a peek at what has been negotiated, and I think it's gonna be very favorable. And, and I feel very strongly that it would incorporate an eleventh pickup.
So what I'm hearing you say is you, you, Stephanie, Chris, believe this is a sustainable action to take?
I, I would say from my submittal, back when I submitted the, the FY twenty six budget pertaining to trash and recycling only. That was based on ten collections, and I submitted, submitted that to cover us from a contingency standpoint. To cover us for those two specific bullet points that are just so, so up in the air. We don't know what they might be or could be. And we just don't wanna, wanna get whacked with that. That said, when I just received the proposal from waste management for what they're offering us heading into this year. I feel confident that we're gonna be able to negotiate an extension with them prior to July one that will incorporate. More than likely, a cheaper overall rate, and in fact, include an eleventh pickup, but just to be clear, the. FY twenty six budget that, that Stephanie has right now. I didn't incorporate an eleven pickup. That's just contingency pack though, to cover us.
Rob, lovely. Oh, sorry, Todd.
I'm sorry, Joe. What I would, what my recommendation would be is. Allow us the opportunity right now, an ability to negotiate a great contract with waste management. And like I said, they would come in, obviously would need select board sign off anyways, and see what we're able to get into the equation. But know that at the select board so chooses to utilize the existing proposed submitted budget that I have submitted, then. Know that that didn't technically incorporate an eleventh pickup.
Todd, you, you don't anticipate that from the current proposal, it going up? At best, it's.
No, no, at best, and like I said, I apologize, but it did come in the day before Christmas Eve, and I really looked at it. Extensively today and will continue to do so and continue to have conversations with waste management, but. It looks very favorable, and I don't wanna go on record in saying. Much more, but I think that the board will be very pleased to see what will be incorporated within that new contract, which obviously would come into play July one. And I apologize because of the overlap with negotiations with them and obviously receiving a proposal from them just before Christmas wasn't ideal. And obviously us having to submit a budget back in November, which is the sequence of events, it just, things are overlapping, which is. Somewhat making the storyline confusing, but I know the desire to have an eleventh pickup, but not have it impact us financially and. We're doing our best to try to incorporate that, and like I said, I feel very confident that that will be the case.
Appreciate the aggressive negotiation and trying to fit it within the, the operating budget.
Todd, I know you're, you and Bernard are doing the best you can on that, and I appreciate your efforts, but this is something that came up back in. October of twenty three. And I'm gonna keep fighting for it.
And Joe, I, I respect that you're fighting for it. I just think that our job as the three of us. Is we can't just keep adding to the, the cost line without making hard decisions on trade-offs, that's all. So, you know, when we're talking about this, or we're talking about the two incremental firefighters, you know, there is. A cap to what we have as revenue. And so if we're going to prioritize something that by its very definition means we're. Deprioritizing something else and having to cut it, that's all.
No, no, I didn't realize there was a cap, Rob. Thank you.
The cap is prop two and a half. It's two, two and a half percent plus new growth. That's the cap to the levy.
I'll repeat it again, Rob. I didn't realize there was a cap. If we need to go line by line, as you said last year, I'm happy to go line by line.
I wanna thank Todd for his work, his continued effort, and like I said, from where we are. Where we were in November to where we are today has been a significant improvement, especially to accommodate this eleventh collection. And I know where Todd is. I understand the contingencies and the concerns that he has. He's always put together a very good budget. And his continued work with waste management, so we look forward to your continued work on that, Todd. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll be sure to, like I said, once the proposals, you know. Once we feel confident with a solid proposal, we'll be sure to bring it before the select board. And I'll be sure to also have representation from waste manager, should there be any questions. As I know in the past, there's been questions about, you know, the process by which we look at, say, a waste management or. Or inquiries whether or not we should go out and explore other opportunities, but I think there's a lot to be said with the overall familiarity. Overall level of comfortability within our community with waste management, and particularly the two drivers that have consistently been. Serving our community for a number of years now.
Thank you, Todd. Mr. Chair, if I may suggest something, I just received word that. One of our attendees is gonna be participating in your discussion, one of your discussions on the new business. Does have another commitment at eight o'clock. Ms. Ellen Rollins, I didn't know if you would like to take that particular matter out of sequence on your agenda to have that conversation, so she could be here to participate in that.
I'd be happy if, Rob and Marion, if you agree. Take out a sequence, but just for the record, Rob. I was being sarcastic. I'm keenly aware of proposition two and a half and the new growth, just for the record.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, you have a Q and A? Want me to read it?
Please.
From Kathy Wallace, two eighty three Farm Lane. What is the current emergency plan? Who will staff these emergency centers and what will the hours be? I think that's a very large question. At this point in time, and certainly not anticipated in the agenda, but. You can deal with it as you see fit.
Rob, Marion, and Chris, I'd prefer to get Ms. Rollings in here, and then we can come back to that question.
That's fine.
No objection to that.
Fun with me.
All right, so we have. Is Ellen? Can we let her in? Tish?
Yes, I'm bringing her and Elijah's here as well.
Great. And Jeff Silver, I see as well. Elijah, welcome. Ellen, welcome.
Uh, thank you. Thanks for taking us out of sequence. I appreciate it.
Would you like to? Start the discussion?
Uh, well, we were invited here, I guess, by town administrator because we had sent a letter of recommendation. That, uh, asking the select board to explore imposing a twenty five mile per hour speed limit. In thickly settled areas and in the town centers, kind of uniformly across town. Just wanted to kind of introduce that, that that had come up in our meetings based on asks from residents that had reached out to some planning board members. With concerns about the pervasive speeding and they had safety concerns, you know, both auto vehicle safety and pedestrian safety based on. What I think I've certainly observed, a lot of speeding, particularly in neighborhoods like the maze and thickly settled areas and through the town centers. When they can, when traffic isn't stop and go. But obviously, planning board is not the entity that can do that. So we were advised by our town staff that what we could do, and our board did discuss it, and there was. Unanimous support amongst the board that it would be something worth looking at, given that some of our neighboring towns have done this successfully. In the years since this was something that was introduced in the state of Massachusetts. So, you know, we were, we, we decided to send you the letter of recommendation since we had had residents come to us, and it's not something that's within our purview. To actually take action on, but that's why we sent it along to you.
Thank you very much. Elijah, do you have any comments on this?
Yes, so I, I forwarded this request to Chris. And you as the select board, we understand that you are the roadway authority, and again, just to kind of. Second, some of Ellen's comments is that. This was something that was brought to a planning board members from residents, as well as concerns from the board itself. On pedestrians.
Thank you, Elijah.
Mr. Chair, just to, just to read the section of the, the recommendation from the planning board, it reads on October twenty ninth. Twenty twenty four, the planning board agreed to make a recommendation to the select board and to the police chief. To sponsor a warrant article for the May nineteenth, twenty twenty five annual town meeting, asking voters to decide whether or not to opt. Into Mass General Law, chapter ninety seven, seventeen C, which allows the town to set. A townwide speed limit of twenty five miles per hour within thickly settled areas or business district. And then talks about during their discussion, they noted more public safety on roadways and reduction of speed limits. The means to do so. So the recommendation is, the way I understand it, is a recommendation. From the planning board for the select board to sponsor an article to accept or to discuss, to accept or not to opt into that, a mass general law.
Thank you, Chris. Chief Silver, would you like to comment?
Sure. Hi, good evening. So, we, we had talked about this, if my memory serves me correct, back in two thousand twenty one. We looked into it, the law passed in two thousand sixteen, I believe, two thousand sixteen or two thousand seventeen, around there. And the last time I looked, you know, maybe seventy, seventy eight, seventy nine, maybe eighty, last time I looked. Of the three hundred and fifty one cities and towns had adopted it. You know, this. You know, this is a tricky thing because, you know, generally speaking, of course, you know, cars driving slower is a. Is a good thing in a vacuum. We're talking about thickly settled areas here, so. That's the, the defined under the law for thickly settled business district. Or a residential district where houses are two hundred feet apart or less for a quarter of a mile, so like on one oh nine, that would be from, say. Like Westwood Pizza, the summer street, one oh nine, the speed limit changes, you know, at different points in times. And then some of the residential streets. So, so driving slower is better, however, if the goal is to reduce accidents. We just don't have a lot of accidents in town. We do have them at the East Street Rotary. We did have a tragic pedestrian accident here in town, that was not related to speed, tragic nonetheless. So, I mean, there are some counterbalancing concerns, right? If, if you, particularly on one oh nine, if you reduce. The speed from thirty to twenty five, you're gonna increase during certain hours congestion and commuting time. You know, you're also, I guess, there's the, the argument, like we saw with the East Street Bridge, we had somewhere in the neighborhood of fourteen or seventeen signs. From the Rotary to the bridge, about the height of the bridge, and we had accidents there all the time. You know, historically, speeding is not affected by the speed limit. It's affected literally by a police officer out doing radar or sitting in the cruiser, and when the officer leaves, the speed picks up. So you know, it's challenging, right? I mean, I think it's something that, you know, at at base level, organically sounds good, right? Like drive slower is, that's a good thing. You want people to be safer, I guess, for sure. I think the issue is does changing the speed limit do that? There's a significant amount of driver education that goes along with that, right? Because since the beginning of time, people are used to, if they are so inclined to drive the speed limit at thirty in a thickly settled area, they're now, they now need to be put on notice in all fairness, because we try to make traffic stops about safety and education, punitive fines, that the speed limit has been reduced. You know, there's a lot of counterbalancing arguments there, right? I mean, the speeding tickets, that would effectively increase every speeding ticket by fifty dollars a ticket because it's ten dollars a mile. So it would be easy when you got somebody who was speeding to have a speeding ticket that would be, you know, three hundred dollars, right? And then from a point of view of kind of equal justice and procedural justice, you look at people that actually get arrested for actual crimes and go to the district court and they're paying, you know, sixty-two fifty or ninety-two fifty in court costs. And that's the end of it, and they're released as opposed to, you know, a three hundred dollar ticket and a surcharge for seven years. So you know, there are arguments on both sides of it. Like I say, at base level, you know, telling people to drive slower is great. That's always the goal. But in terms of, you know, would it help us? So can we point to actual data where that's been a problem for us? You know, where there have been injuries or anything of that nature. We just have, thankfully, we haven't had a lot of it. So that's kind of where we are on the issue. I didn't get the opportunity to talk about this that much this time or at all this time at the planning board level, like we did before in twenty-one. But, you know, the issue's been around for a while and happy to talk about it now with the board and the community and answer any questions you have.
I guess my question is, Jeff. Go ahead, Ellen. You go ahead. You're on a time.
Sorry, I just, I guess my first question would be, would it be possible to maybe get some data from our eighty neighbors or so that have already done this and see if they've found that they've it's been effective or that, you know, that they they're happy with having made that decision? That that I'd be interested in that. I mean, I know it's not my purview, but that's the first thing that comes to mind is could we get information from the towns that have actually had this in place for a few years and and whether it's working for them and whether they've just felt it was successful?
I'm sure we could, certainly. I can tell you the, you know, the unofficial answer, because when this came out, this was a radical change for all the chiefs. So you know, as you would expect, you talk about this in your professional circles and you know, throughout the county and throughout the state, right? I'm the president of the Regional Police Group for the Metro Boston area, so that's forty-five cities and towns in and around Boston and part of the statewide chiefs group. I won't mention any names, but, you know, I can tell you with pretty clear confidence what the overwhelming majority of the chiefs thought of that, whose community did adopt this, what they thought about it. I don't know if they'd be equally comfortable sharing that opinion publicly. But but I'd certainly be happy in earnest, you know, to have somebody reach out to all of them and you know, see perhaps if their opinion has changed or what their experience is, certainly.
I think that would be helpful. Ellen, do you have anything else?
No, no, that was really it. And just, you know, thank you for entertaining our recommendation. As I said, like it came to us from residents. And as we were not the proper entity to really take any action on it, we just wanted to make sure we conveyed both the thoughts we'd heard from residents and and the board's outcome of our discussion and and our interest in it as well to the correct board that would or would not be able to take action on it. So I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Ellen.
I just ask one question about any sense from those who were raising it as to whether this was, you know, purely a speed issue or how much of it is a volume issue due to rerouting, due to Waze, Apple Maps, Google Maps? Because I've spoken with a number of folks in in communities that are like, you know, parts of town where they've got people cutting through. And yes, speed is a compound thing, but it's the speed and the volume of traffic. And oftentimes, it's the volume that really is the frustrating, confounding issue. So any sense that sort of what the driver was?
Probably both. I can't speak for people. I mean, the anecdotes I've heard was, you know, people, I won't name streets, but, you know, people seeing people bombing down some of our thirty mile an hour streets at forty-five, fifty. You know, I I can say myself, when I'm driving down one oh nine and I'm doing thirty-five or even forty and someone's almost in my trunk because they want me to go faster or get, I I've definitely noticed people are much more in a hurry. And that's, that's the sense in the conversations that I had with people was it wasn't necessarily the volume. I'm sure that's part of it. Maybe that's part of the reason people are in a hurry, but that everybody's driving faster and nobody seems to be wanting to follow the speed limit unless they get pulled over because they're in a hurry and that's the most important thing. So I I would say maybe little.
This one's for chief, really. Like anytime one of those those neighborhoods reaches out, oftentimes you you guys will put the speed, you know, camera and the radar there. When you do, do you collect data from that? And are you seeing that, you know, speeds are faster than his start? Or is it just there are that many more folks exceeding the speed limit by whatever the threshold is?
We do. We do do that. We do it in a number of ways. Sometimes when you see the signs up that say your speed is, we're collecting speed. Sometimes you see the signs and it may look like the battery's dead and the sign is blacked out, and it could be, but it's usually not. That usually is designed as a ruse to look like the sign's dead, but it's collecting data in the dark. And we also have some, you know, speed and data collectors that we strap to poles or trees. I would say this, to the people that that feel like cars are flying right by them and they're going, you know, whatever, pick a speed forty-five, fifty miles an hour. I hear you. As someone who spent thirty-one years on the side of the road and traffics to hubs, you know, directing traffic and so forth, when a car goes by you, it feels fast. I'll tell you this also. It's generally going nowhere near as fast as you think it is. And the signs prove that out. We've gotten calls from people that I'm confident in their harder hearts. They believe cars are going down their streets at fifty miles an hour. We've even put up two signs in some cases just to make sure, because, you know, they're good, but they're not infallible, right? And you want to make sure you don't miss a vehicle. And they'll say, you know, from this time to that time, these cars are going no less than forty or fifty miles an hour, I guarantee it. I know what that looks like. I've been driving for thirty years. And we pull the data and it's not there. Now, absolutely, it feels faster than. It feels fast. You know, I'm a parent too. I get it. I remember when my son was young, playing in and near the street. I go to my mailbox too and get the mail, and I know when cars go by, they feel like they're going fast. So I'm not dismissing the concern as, you know, invalid or uneducated or anything. I think it's it's well meaning. I can just tell you that overwhelmingly the data doesn't prove that out. Occasionally, yes. Occasionally, you do get people that are driving fast. They're very small numbers. I think people that are inclined to speed because they're either in a hurry, distracted, just so predisposed that they want to try to make time however they can are gonna do that regardless of the speed limit. But we just don't have wide scale speeding in town, which is why the vast majority of the citations we write are, well, the cars that we stop are either verbal warnings or written warnings because the speed is not excessive. And and we try to make the stops about education, right? We try to, you know, let people know to slow down and be careful and so forth. So that's kind of a long answer to your short question, but there's a lot packed in there, you know, based on a number of years of us doing this. And I, you know, I think it's important, you know, to validate the people that think that, right? They're not, you know, making it up, you know, they're not exaggerating. I don't think they are.
No.
It's just that the perception is not the the data-driven reality in many cases.
And then one question that I would have is, and I don't know if this is a question for Chris, Nora, somebody on the sort of GIS side of things, but based on the very detailed description of what qualifies as a thickly settled area, what what number of streets, what percentage of streets in town would actually qualify? Would it, would it end up addressing some of the ones that maybe were the source of some of these these questions?
I think.
I don't know. We need an answer tonight. I just, it's something I want to know before rendering a decision around this.
But you know what? But you're leading right to where I'm headed. But first, I want to see what, oh, good, hands up. I wanted to get to you, Mary Ann, please. And then, Rob, I'll come back to that.
Thank you, Joe. Chief, if if the goal is to reduce speeds in town, do you believe that adopting this statute with the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit in thickly settled or business district areas is the most effective way we can do that? Or are there other ways that you think would be more effective? And and then as a sub part of that question, if I could add, are there any safety issues that you think are raised by reducing to twenty-five miles per hour? And I'm thinking about areas where it's currently forty miles per hour, for example, on a major thoroughfare like one oh nine in places.
Sure. So, part one to the question, I would say sadly, I wish it were that easy. I would say, no, I I don't think it will be effective. I think the people that are speed conscious now are, will continue to be speed conscious of how they're driving and those that are otherwise too busy, too distracted or too disinterested will not. I think signage historically has been shown to be very ineffective for any one of a variety of things. And so I, you know, I don't, I I think it's something that, like I said earlier, you know, organically, right? Just kind of intuitively, it sounds like, well, that's great. Like, let's lower the speed limit. Like, if people drive slower, terrific. You know, I agree. But I do not think, part one is, no, I don't, I don't think it would be effective. And then, two, I think, you know, so this is addressing, this is talking about statutorily thickly settled areas, right, which is kind of buried in some legalese and Chapter Ninety, Section One, I think, or the all the definitions for Chapter Ninety, the motor vehicle law that gives you that definition of thickly settled areas. So it would be reducing that from thirty to twenty-five. It wouldn't, you know, those areas that are that are forty wouldn't be able to go to twenty-five. But what would happen, to your point, as as relates to a safety issue, is you could have an accordion effect, I think, for those people who perhaps, because I think we would need to sign it above and beyond what the statutory requirement is, which is essentially at the entrances to the town, right, to put people on notice. That's how the, that's how the general law is written, to do no less than that. That's what many communities do. We would likely want to post it for driver education in fairness. You could have somebody going forty who then realizes they need to go to twenty-five and they're gonna slam on the brakes and somebody's gonna be right behind them. And then when they hit that thickly settled area, I think you could increase some congestion. It's gonna increase some commuter time and some frustration. I think people that are just so inclined to not be interested in that, if you don't have concurrent enforcement are gonna start wanting to pass them. I would analogize that to the person who drives fifty miles an hour in the left lane on the highway, right? That's a, that's a traffic violation. It's a hundred dollar fine. You have to keep to the right if you're not passing. The state is, you know, some years back, put out a pretty wide, broad media campaign about how dangerous it is for people to to change lanes and cut back and forth and how it increased aggressive driving to try to get compliance for the slower drivers to keep right. I think that's a concern. You know, again, we just don't have a lot of data that supports a bunch of speed. There certainly is some speeding, for sure. And if there are areas of particular concern, we tried to address that a number of ways. We've actually put on, you know, a primary traffic officer and a secondary impact officer who does a variety of things to include traffic. And we go to particular areas, but, I mean, we see it with the signs too, right? We'll put an officer there doing radar. We'll put the sign up. We'll see the speeds drop when the officer is there multiple days in a row. We've done it for a week, ten days at a time. And then we take the officer away even during that ten-day span or seven-day span. And the minute the officer's gone, the speeds, you know, you know, pick up a little again. You know, the average speed picks up. So that's not me trying to suggest that we have a police officer on every corner. But that that's just the reality of the fact is that actual police officers and police cars in areas slow down drivers and and pretty much nothing else, for the most part, does.
Thank you.
Mary Ann, are you good?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Elijah?
Yes. Well, first, I definitely, when I grow up, I want to have a office like Chief Silver. So I'll put that out there. But in regards to these, the talk of information and data, I just did want to point out one part of the letter that I sent definitely does find that, you know, forty-seven percent of pedestrians struck at thirty miles per hour sustain serious injuries and twenty percent die compared to twenty-five miles an hour. An estimated thirty percent of pedestrians sustain serious injury and about twelve die. So there is a drastic drop off in the severity of accidents when the speed limit is lowered.
Thank you, Elijah. I did see that in the in the studies that you sent us. So thank you for sending that. Rob, do you have anything else?
Nope.
Mary Ann?
Do not.
Okay. It sounds to me as though we need some additional information. Specifically, Jeff, I'm really interested in the unofficial feedback, what you get from your fellow chiefs on that. I I do believe in benchmarking. I am concerned because eighty-four other communities have done this. And I'd also like to mention that it wasn't town-wide. Some of the cities and towns identified particular streets by name and neighborhoods by name. So I think, I think we need a little more information on this. And before I wrap this up, Nora, I know you just popped up. Did you, did you have a comment on any of this, Nora?
No, other than to say that there has not been a GIS analysis yet. We could have one done to see which neighborhoods have houses closer than two hundred feet apart. Just generally speaking, I would say most neighborhoods in Westwood do have those configurations. There are sections of Gay Street, Clavertree Street, and Summer and Grove Street that probably do not have houses that close together, but the majority of the town does.
Thank you, Nora. Mary Ann, Rob, do you folks have any opposition to having the chief come back and maybe Elijah and Ella come back to us in June to discuss this further after they get a little more information?
I don't have any issue. I thought the planning board's ask was to try and put this on this year's warrant. So I I'm not satisfied that I've got enough to say that it goes goes on this year's warrant, but I'm certainly open to the idea of getting, receiving more data and more information.
Yeah, I I think it's, I think it's, you know, you have to be respectful to the other boards. I think it's a noble gesture, and I think we just need to get more information.
Yep.
We're all in agreement. I I think we need more information. It's not something we could take action on now for the twenty-twenty-five warrant. But yes, let's let's get more information and discuss it further.
Mr. Chair, just want to say, Ellen, you and your board members, and to Elijah and Nora, I want to thank you for bringing this to our attention, having this discussion, beginning this conversation is very helpful. So thank you very much for that.
Yeah, no, thank you. And and I I support what I heard here. I think more information. It sounds like it's obviously not an easy answer. And I I think I I said I was interested in more data too. So I I appreciate you all supporting, looking into this further and then making an informed decision. So thank you. And on behalf of the residents that reached out to us, thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Thank you, Elijah. Thanks, Jeff. Rob, Mary Ann, can we go back to our agenda?
Sure thing.
You bet.
I think we're at Molly with Fire Station One update. Am I correct, Chris?
Yeah, let me just share my screen.
Here you are.
All right. So thank you very much. I am Molly Fitzpatrick. I'm the deputy town administrator. And I'm going to be giving an update on the Fire Station One or FS One project. So a quick outline of what we're going to cover here tonight, we're going to begin with a project update that's going to cover the timeline, the permitting process and the project cost. Then I'm going to turn it over to our finance director, Stephanie McManus, to walk through the project funding proposal and taxation estimates. And then finally, I will outline And then finally, I will outline the next steps as we enter twenty twenty five. And I'm happy to pause for questions along the way, or if you want to save them for the end. So this is the timeline we've been working off of. The feasibility study was completed in twenty twenty three. That study laid out many things, including confirming the need for a new station, outlining what needed to be included in that new station, and a consensus that building the new station at the existing site was the most prudent. In January twenty twenty four, a special town meeting was held to approve funding for the design and bid of the new fire station. In February, the town administrator formed the FS one working group. This group, this group includes the fire chief, the assistant fire chief, the deputies. And for staff, it includes the town administrator, myself, the director of community and economic development, facilities director, building commissioner, making sure I have everybody, the select board chair, and two representatives from the permanent building committee. It also includes representatives from our architecture firm, Doran Whittier, and our owner, project manager, Vertex. I'll talk a little bit later about what the working group has been up to over the last year. But essentially, with the input from the department and guidance from the staff members I've mentioned, the architects have designed a new fire station completely from the inside out. The recommendation of what the building should look like, what the building should entail, was presented to the land use boards over the fall. And I'm happy to say that the permitting process was completed. I'll touch about that in a minute. Right now, the architecture firm is working on finalizing the construction documents and getting the product ready to go out to bid in mid-March. The project will be presented at town meeting on May nineteenth, and there will be a special election on June third. So that was a lot of information. But in summary, we are on the timeline that we set for ourselves earlier in twenty twenty four. Moving on to the permitting update, I mentioned that the permitting process, permitting, yeah, permitting process was completed this past fall. This includes the project obtaining all necessary permits, the EIDR from the planning board in early November, all of the necessary variances from the zoning board of appeal in mid-November, and the stormwater permitting requirements approved by the conservation commission in December. I wanted to give an update on the project costs. The project is continuing to hold at just under forty million dollars. These are the numbers we received when we went out for cost estimation estimation in late October twenty twenty four. We'll go out for our third cost estimation again in February of twenty twenty five. I do want to caveat this with, we don't know what we don't know. These are estimates, after all. We continue to be in an uncertain market, so we do expect some fluctuation in these numbers. So through twenty twenty four, the working group reviewed every aspect of this project. And at each step, we're asking the question, is this a must have, or is this a nice to have?
Hey, Molly.
Yes, of course.
Just my screen, but it appears you were frozen in between. No, maybe it went through. So forget that.
Okay. So as the working group, working group reviewed all elements of the building design and their associated costs, many elements of the project were either eliminated or not included to control the impact of the budget. This is a list of some of the elements that were eliminated or not included in the project scope. Based on all those reductions and configuration changes made over this year, the building size was reduced by approximately thirty five hundred square feet, which equates to just under three million dollars in savings. There we go. Go back one. There we go. So continuing off that, there are additional design changes that were either made or not pursued. And I'd like to highlight, the first is location of the building on the site. The team recommended moving the building northward as to not conflict with existing duct, utility duct banks. The location of the maintenance bay similarly was moved north. Originally, it was placed at the back of the building. By moving the maintenance bay to the north side of the property, we were able to recommend a more stacked approach. A stacked building is a square building. A square building is easier and less costly to construct. The decision was made to eliminate the public meeting space. This eliminated the need for a media room, which was highlighted in the previous slide, and also reduced the number of parking space that would be required on the site because we would not need to plan for resident parking. And then finally, the temporary ops at the American Legion. The recommendation is to use modulators instead of renovating the American Legion. And this was done for a variety of reasons. Essentially, that if we use modulators, it would eliminate the need to renovate the American Legion. A renovation, as anyone who's renovated their house knows, can get out of control costly very quickly. And so in order to add certainty to the project, the recommendation for modulators was included. At this point, so that's the project update. That's where we are with our project timeline permitting. Sorry, sorry. Timeline permitting and cost. I'm going to now turn it over to our finance director, Stephanie McManus, who's going to outline the proposed project funding as well as the taxation estimates.
Thank you, Molly. So capital projects like this are funded by borrowing. There's two options for borrowing, short term versus long term. This project would require, it would be long term debt that's permanently financed through what we call municipal bonds. So the debt service for that project, the repayment of the principal and interest debt service would be through general fund, including each year's annual operating budget. So that budget includes, we call both exempt and non-exempt debt. So for non-exempt debt, that is tax revenue funds set aside as part of the annual operating budget. That is what we call within Prop two and a half. Just an example of that is a road bond, a ten year road bond. You know, we fund that within our year over year operating budget for for debt. And as the new debt is sold to replace old debt dropping off. There's also some other examples on here from the past, Fire Station Two and the Police Department. So on the side that this project would be through, it's the exempt debt. So what that would require is a debt exclusion. It's that is debt added to the levy limit. So it temporarily increases the levy above the town's levy limit. It's additional tax revenue raised to pay the debt service until that debt is retired. So that includes the exact amount of the debt cost is raised in taxes. And then when that bond ends, the exempt taxes end. It would require town meeting approval for the borrowing article, as well as a ballot vote in order to approve the project. And just two examples there are the Westwood High School and the newest Pine Hill Elementary School. That's how those were both funded. Molly, if you could advance the slide?
Hey, Steph, before you leave this slide, real quick.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
For somebody who maybe is new to town and has got the question of, well, why is Fire Station Two and the Police Department able to be funded within the Prop two and a half amount? But Pine Hill and the high school, or in this case, you know, Fire Station, why, how come those are exempt and have to be added to the tax bill?
No, it's a good question. So I wasn't here, but at the time that the Fire Station Two project and the Police Department project were happening, there was additional tax revenue that came in through University Station. So the town, it was a great effort, was able to utilize that additional bump in the tax levy through additional new growth of University Station to fund those two items within the non-exempt debt budget.
Right.
Does that answer your question?
Big chunk of new growth that helped help make that possible.
Correct. And that really only happens when there is new developments such as University Station, a large addition to new new growth and tax revenue coming into the town.
Great, thank you.
So as Molly just mentioned, the estimated project cost for construction is currently estimated at forty million. It would be financed through the town issuing long term debt with an exempt bond outside of Prop two and a half. This required debt exemption authorization at town meeting through a two thirds vote, as well as a ballot vote, a majority vote at the ballot. So when when I'm about to go through is sort of the tax impact for residents, if this project was to be approved, I just want to highlight some assumptions when we do this. So we reach out to our financial advisors whenever we're asked to sort of come up with a cost estimate for a project as far as the debt and how that will impact taxpayers. And they give a range of assumptions that we like to follow. For this project in particular, we would utilize most likely a thirty year term. So that is the longest term allowed for municipal projects to be borrowed. It spreads out the cost over, you know, residents coming in over the next thirty years, right? So with road bonds or smaller projects, we sometimes do a ten fifteen year bond. The recommendation for a project such like this is the usual thirty year term. It would be level debt service payments over that thirty year term. And we are currently being given an estimate of an interest rate at this time right now of four and a quarter. And you'll see that we sort of give a range later on another slide of that interest rate just because it really does depend on the interest rate environment at that time that we go out to borrow. So the, and what, another piece that factors into what I'll present on the next slide is we always go off the DOR, the Department of Revenue's average single family home value, for when we're sort of calculating what the average tax bill might be impacted by this project. So right now, as of FY twenty five, that amount is about one point two million. And then I just always add in notes that these values are estimates only. The interest rate is subject to change. The tax impact assumes no growth in assessed value over life of the bond, assumes residential to commercial tax rate shift will remain constant, and that it assumes the home value remain constant. So basically, it's just a snapshot in time what this would cost today. So if you could advance, Molly? Thank you. So if this was a thirty year level debt service payment bond for forty million dollars, the total cost for both the principal and interest debt service at four and a quarter would be that number right there that you see, the seventy one point five million. And this is just a snapshot of at that four and a quarter over thirty years, what the annual debt service payment would be, which is that two point three eight five number. The cost per hundred thousand of assessed home value would be thirty point five six. And the cost per that DOR average home for this project at that one point two million for FY twenty five would be three hundred and sixty eight dollars. So just to step back a little bit, when we come up with the the assessors on tonight, so I hope I say this all correctly, but the annual tax bills, we go off of at that time when the board votes the shift factor, what the assessed value of the town is at that time, what the split between the residential and commercial is. So all of that information for FY twenty five is what's included here, which is great. So that's really the most up to date information that we have. So for an example of that one point two million dollar average home, that that home's FY twenty five tax bill was fifteen thousand four hundred and twelve dollars. If this project were to pass and we were to go to borrow right now at the interest rate included and all the costs included, that tax bill would be increased in that FY twenty six, say, three hundred and sixty eight dollars. So that would be the impact of this project on the tax bill. And I'm happy to fill questions on this because I know it's sort of a complicated piece of it. So I hope I'm explaining it appropriately. Any questions at all on that that I can highlight or make clear? And then just list it down below. Okay, just list it down below, or some additional home assessed values. I apologize, that should say FY twenty five tax bill, what their FY twenty five tax bill is, and what the estimated annual tax impact on that home would be. And that's, and that's just for this project piece, right? So what that this project would increase the tax bill. All right, you can advance to the next slide, Molly. Thanks. This is just that same information, but with a range of interest rates. Because as I said, that, you know, four and a quarter is what we're being advised as of today. But we like to give a range because it may change by the time we actually go out to borrow. So these are just costs for a hundred thousand dollars of assessed home value, and then the cost per the DOR average home for this project at those different rates. So going between three hundred fifty seven dollars and four hundred and one dollars.
Thank you, Stephanie. So in terms of next steps, the working group will be making a detailed presentation to the FinCom next week, January fourteenth. There's also a community meeting scheduled for February fourth. We will have an updated cost estimate in February twenty twenty five. So we'll be able to present that to you probably in early March. We're on schedule to go out to bid in March twenty twenty five, and we're anticipating the bid opening being in about mid-April twenty twenty five. All this is working towards having the final bids in hand for the FinCom public hearing on the project, annual town meeting on May nineteenth, and the special election on June third. So just in summary, the project remains on schedule. And at the estimated cost, it's obtained the necessary permits required, and we're gearing up to get the project set out to bid. So with that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right, nice presentation, Molly and Steph. Well done. Rob, any questions?
None from me, Joe.
Okay, Mary Ann?
No, thank you both.
Any questions in the queue?
Mr. Chair, we have that one question from before.
Yep, I'm on. Speaking of Chris, could you? Can you have that for our next meeting? The answer still out.
I can answer it now if you'd like.
Oh, great, okay. I skipped over it. I shouldn't have.
No, no problem. So what is the current emergency plan? Just to remind everyone, what is it? This is from Kathy Wallace, two eighty three Farm Lane. What is the current emergency plan? Who will staff these emergency centers? And what will the hours be? So what is the current emergency plan? We call it our SEP. So our SEP is what is called, it's the comprehensive emergency management plan. The last time, this is being updated from two thousand and sixteen. Chief Lund, Assistant Chief McCarthy, Molly, myself, along with our representative from MEMA, have been working on this plan. From this plan, we have different subgroups that are working on different sections of the plan as far as updating the plan. As far as the questions regarding who will staff these emergency centers. So in the past, we've had staff from the COA that was staffing, and we may have some members from different representations from different departments going into those centers to assist. So then what will the hours be? That will all determine on the type of emergency that it is. And if we're looking at something that is, if, for example, if this main library is going to be used as a center, and it's during their normal operating hours, those may be the hours they make. Those hours may be extended depending on the situation and depending on how many people actually attend. So it really is on a case by case basis, depending on the emergency and the level of residents who do seek the services from those centers.
Of course, this is, this must be spelled out in your policy. Who's going to staff it when?
Well, it depends on the emergency, Joe. So for example, if we're having a cooling center.
Yep.
And it's not, it's not yet, not a level of emergency where we're having an evacuation, wherever power outages and downlines, that would be different than if we have to use the main, if we have to use the high school as a shelter, as an overnight situation. So they are different levels of services depending on the need of the emergency.
No, what I'm asking is, I get the buildings, just, I think what Kathy's asking, what staff will be there? Is that, I'm guessing that's incorporated into your plan that?
It will be. So for example, in the past, as I said, we opened up the COA, the COA staff, that, when we opened that up. And then we would have different people from emergency management that may have to go in to seek out. So maybe some from the fire department go in to make sure that everyone's okay, there's no, there's no situations. But again, it depends on a case by case basis. But it will certainly be part of a plan that we will be finalizing.
Possible, we have call trees for the different floors and stuff. Okay, great. Back to the Molly's presentation. Anything else on that? Any questions from anybody? Molly, great thing we can, we can do to help you out.
Sorry, I was dealing with a dog issue. No, we're excited to be at FinCom and I'm excited to see all of you there.
Great, thank you so much. Great job, great job, Steph. All right, Todd, I think we're down to you for Sustainable Materials Recovery Program, is that correct? Doing that.
That's the grant?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm happy to, I may have, may have left the meeting because he did have a personal matter he had to attend to. Yeah, so we have a, just sorry, let me just get to that on the agenda. The town has been awarded a, the town of Westwood received Recycling Dividends Program under the Sustainability Materials Recovery Program. The town of Westwood has earned six points that will, in essence, receive four thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. This is part of the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program and it's been created under three-ten CMR. It's a Green Communities Act. I want to certainly thank Todd, Brendan, and everyone at DPW and the entire community for their cooperation in the work that we've been doing. And this is something that they will continue to seek out different non-tax dollars for, to assist.
Thank you very much. And since you're on deck, I think you're going to take care of the initial warrant article discussion, is that correct?
The, we, we have a motion, Joe, to accept the grant first.
I'm sorry, yep, thank you.
Which I'm happy to make. I hereby move that the Select Board accept the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program municipal grant for four thousand six hundred and twenty dollars and to authorize the town administrator to sign the contract.
I second that motion. Roll call, Mary Ann?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Motion carries.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So just as a walkthrough of the warrant, as, as you know, your first meeting in December is when you open up the annual town meeting warrant for May of twenty-five. Your first meeting in January, which is this one, is the meeting in which you close that warrant. We have, we're, we presented to you, we're presenting to you thirteen budget articles, seven select board articles, which I'd like to talk to you about adding one to that. We have two citizens petitions, we have three, we have six planning board articles, and we have twelve miscellaneous articles. As far as the select, as far as the budget articles, these are things that you heard about earlier this evening from Stephanie's presentation. It's our budget one through thirteen includes the FY twenty-five budget adjustment transfer, one and two, budget three is currently listed as the FY twenty-six operating budget, which we are still working on. And then as you get into the capital articles, budget four, the miscellaneous capital, which is the one, one million five hundred and twenty-five thousand, the school capital article, base capital article is one million one hundred and forty thousand. Stephanie talked about the sewer capital at seventy-five thousand, the other sewer capital at five hundred thousand, and that was beat appropriation for borrowing. We talked, she talked about the two additional capital articles in the amount of one million thirty-five thousand and the second one in the amount of one million two hundred and fifty-two thousand. She also talked about the additional capital of nine twenty. The stabilization fund for FY twenty-six is a hundred and twenty-five thousand. One of the questions that we did have for the board is whether or not you wanted that to stay at a hundred and twenty-five or if you wanted that to tweak up to a hundred and fifty, which we will talk to you about that a little bit later. The old penalty liability trust is one point five, nine, one point five nine, one million five hundred and ninety, ninety thousand dollars. And then we talked at the end, when Stephanie was making her presentation regarding a warrant article for aid to the elderly in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. And just to refresh the board's memory and those who are listening, this was a identical amount and action by a prior board and prior town meeting. We brought this to town meeting to put funds into that to assist those who participate in that program. We have two citizens petitions. We have one from Rebecca Ames regarding changing the annual town meeting date to the first Sunday in May. And we also have one from Mr. Joseph Perrotiere regarding the yard waste pickup, which was also discussed earlier. Are set currently, we have seven select board articles. One is, Select Board one is the FS one construction, Select Board, which Molly just nicely went over. Select Board two is a home rule petition to file for special legislation to amend the town charter. As the board knows, the Charter Review Committee and the board, we did, did not go forward with any action at the last town meeting. The Charter Review Committee will be coming back to this board and the FinCom and town meeting to make their recommendations. Select Board three is a local option. This is the prudent investor rule. Stephanie, did you want to go over that a little bit?
I am absolutely happy to. I'll, I'll sort of maybe high-level touch it and then see if there's any questions that could maybe clarify. So this is an item that is being passed by a lot of communities in Massachusetts right now in the last year or so. It's, it was a change to the Mass General Law recently. It's Chapter two oh three C. So currently, the, the legal list in Massachusetts is a list of interest-bearing obligations that a municipality can invest in, including stocks, bonds, and notes. So the town currently invests its trust funds in accordance with Mass General Law. The law was recently updated and allowed for communities to accept a local option. So the acceptance of Mass General Law two oh three C through a local option would allow for a broader range of investments. Just want to highlight, calling it the prudent investor rule is a little tricky because we obviously invest prudently. This is just, they're saying it's an option to expand that, what we, we currently practice beyond the legal list. So the prudent investor rule is a legal standard that requires fiduciaries like trustees managing trust funds, which in this case would be the Treasury Department, to invest to the treasure, town treasurer, to invest assets with the same care and prudence that a reasonable person would use when managing their own investments. This applies to the investment and management of trust assets. So in this case, in, in Westwood, it would only apply to the trust assets. Also note, there's no obligation to do so. If this local option is accepted, we could continue practicing investment as we currently do. It just expands the options a bit past that legal list. The town could, can continue to invest under the legal list of investments as is currently done. So if there's any questions on that, and as we get closer to town meeting, go through FinCom, we'll be giving a lot more information on this, but I just sort of want to highlight that for tonight.
Does the board have any questions regarding that?
This is a recent change?
It's, it's, it is a recent change, yes.
And so, so have any other communities adopted it or is this the first opportunity that all communities would have to adopt it?
You know, I was actually just looking at, I was on a feed the other day of different communities saying, who has adopted it? A lot of people did it at the twenty twenty-four annual town meeting, a lot of communities. So it's sort of just beginning as, as the local option. I can get a list together for sure, though, and, and let you know sort of who's done it recently.
This sort of feels like one of those ones where I don't know that I want to be the guinea pig.
We, we definitely would not be. This is, this is sort of becoming a standard in the community, but I will absolutely come up with a list of what communities have passed it so far and what years they did it in.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Stephanie? Thank you. Want to reintroduce to the board Cheryl Hanley is our principal assessor. And Cheryl is going to be discussing the Heroes Act.
Thanks, Chris. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So in August two thousand twenty-four, there was recent legislate, so recent legislation. There was a, an act passed, it's Chapter one seventy-eight of the Acts of two thousand twenty-four entitled An Act Honoring, Empowering, and Recognizing Our Service Members and Veterans, also known as the Hero Act. I brought the options to the Board of Assessors at our first scheduled meeting. Many of you know, I, I only started in mid-September. Our first meeting was October seventeenth. And the board unanimously and very enthusiastically voted to accept a motion to recommend Clause twenty-two J be presented as an article request at the annual town meeting. So if adopted, twenty-two J would allow for an annual cost of living adjustment based, I'm sorry, provides an additional exemption amount of up to one hundred percent. And the Board of Assessors is recommending the maximum one hundred percent of the amount currently granted to eligible veterans on their domiciles. So if there's a current exemption recipient amount of four hundred dollars, if this is accepted at town meeting, the amount of the exemption would increase to eight hundred. Our one hundred percent disabled veterans currently get a one thousand dollar exemption off of their property taxes annually, and if accepted, that award amount would be two thousand, so on and so forth. We ran the numbers based on the amount of exemptions that we're currently granting. And, and these don't typically vary greatly from year to year, so we can really predict the, the financial impact and not expect too much variation. And doubling the amount of the awards would have an impact to our overlay reserve of about thirty-four, thirty-five thousand dollars, which equates to about three percent of our overlay. So that the board is very enthusiastically recommending Clause twenty-two J be adopted. And let me know if I can answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Well done.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Sure.
Are there any questions from the board, Cheryl?
Not at this time, Cheryl. Pretty straightforward and certainly a deserving benefit.
Agreed. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you very much, Cheryl. The next item is Select Board five, which is Chapter one, one thirty-eight, Section fifty, All Alcohol Application License. And I'll ask Nora to, she can just give a quick overview of this.
Sure. So this is an article that's been requested by one of the grocery stores in town, Wegmans, who would like to have the ability to sell all burnt, all types of alcohol. Right now, they have a license that allows for the sale of wine and beer. And at some of their other locations in other communities, they sell general alcohol as well. There's a request for the board to consider sponsoring this article that asked the town meeting to authorize a request to the General Assembly for an additional license for all alcohol sales, two additional licenses that would cover grocery stores of at least twenty thousand square foot in size. So that would apply to Wegmans, who has requested this, and it would also allow for a second license if our other grocery store, Roach Brothers, then expressed interest in this. It would require the Select Board to make some amendments to its rules and regulations regarding the issuance of alcohol licenses, because right now you only allow alcohol licenses in grocery stores for food and beverages. I also just want to point out the reason that, that there is a limit that's set on this of grocery stores larger, two thousand, twenty thousand square feet or larger has to do with the, the, the pricing and the ability to sell products. You need quite a bit of inventory. And a store that's smaller than that probably would not be able to handle the storage capacity that would be necessary to, to acquire the alcohol in large enough quantities to, to make for competitive pricing. So we're looking at this to allow for up to two licenses in grocery stores of twenty thousand square feet or larger.
Thank you. Pat, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, as always, Nora did a very complete job. We were only asking for two licenses. We could ask for four, but we only want two with stores with twenty thousand square feet or more.
Does the board have any questions for us on this article?
Not at this time.
Not at this time.
Thank you. The next two articles, Select Board six and seven, are regarding the Connet Road Construction Easement. And I'm going to ask Town Council, Mr. Hearn, to.
So there's two construction easements we need to do the work on Connet Road. They're separate properties and, and we're, we've negotiated, we believe we've got an agreement with one of the properties. We're working with the second property. But I, I need to keep them separate because I think they might be, need to be worded differently based on those negotiations. So that's kind of our thought process. Behind it, I'm working with Brendan and Todd on this and counsel for the, for the second homeowner.
Pat, any concern that we will not have that done and the second article would need to be pulled? And, and what is the implication for Todd and any work?
So the second article, if we can't reach an agreement timely, we'll do it. We'll unfortunately just do a construction taking, a construction easement taking, and then try and work with the homeowner appropriately. I, there's too much at stake in terms of potential water problems in that neighborhood and down by that pump station and not let this go forward, in my opinion.
Thank you.
What have any questions for Town Council? At this time? Thank you. What I, bless you. Thank you. What I would like to recommend to the board for consideration is adding a Select Board eight. And this would be for Chapter one forty-one, Section forty-one E. The town went to direct deposit to pay town employees over ten years ago. In, in, in our predecessors, it was with due diligence that they, and do, that they put this in place. Something that came to our attention late last week was there's a certain section of the Mass General Law that the town has yet to accept regarding direct deposit. So what we're looking to do is, as this was brought to our attention, bring it to your attention and look to make a recommendation to add this as Select Board eight, present this to FinCom and town meeting for the town to accept Chapters one forty-one, Section forty-one B. I believe that our predecessors were well-intended. This was just one step that may have been missed.
I'm on board with it, yeah.
No issues.
Right, thank you. The, the next, we have the twelve miscellaneous articles, and these are articles that are, matters are still being worked out, maybe recommended to the board, maybe polled, that type of thing. We'll continue to work due diligently to get these, this, these matters presented to you as quickly as we possibly can. But we also have some things that come up unexpectedly. So we did have, for example, the direct deposit, the timeliness of this. I was able to present this to the board this evening, but if this was tomorrow, when it was brought to our attention, that's where the miscellaneous articles are very helpful. Then we had, currently we have six planning board articles. I'm just going to ask Nora if she can just touch upon those six articles. First one is the zoning bylaw amendments relative to accessory apartments.
Yes, so there's a state law that was passed recently that comes into effect on February second that allows accessory apartments, accessory dwelling units by right in all residential districts. Our bylaw currently restricts accessory apartments to no more than two percent of the total number of housing units in town and requires a special permit for the issuance of an accessory dwelling, for the construction of an accessory dwelling unit. So we are proposing changes that would bring our current bylaw into conformance with the new state law. Our next article proposes changes to the definition of affordable housing, affordable dwelling units. Currently, affordable dwelling units are required for all new special permit construction, special permit residential construction in town. And there's a formula where a minimum of fifteen percent of the total number of units proposed for development have to be affordable units that are affordable to households earning no more than eighty percent of the area median income. And this proposal would allow for greater flexibility to allow us to have some of those units at the eighty percent area median income, others at fifty percent, and still others at thirty percent. So it's just a, a different way, would be the same number of affordable units, but some of them would be more affordable to households earning less income than is currently permitted.
Is there a recommended proportion on those different breaks? Like, because obviously different projects have different sizes of, you know?
They do. Yeah, so the planning board is taking up the details of this at a public hearing on the twenty-eighth. And our housing planner has currently drafted it with specific percentages based on the number of units in a project. So there'll be a chart that's proposed right now. I don't actually have it in front of me. But say there were ten affordable units required for a particular size property, maybe seven of those would be at eighty percent, two of them would be at fifty percent, and one would be at thirty percent, something along those lines. But the planning board will, will hone in on those details at its public hearing on the twenty-eighth. There's also a proposed article. Uh, there's also a proposed article for rezoning of property on uh Providence Highway, the Lambert's Development. Uh, that has been, was originally developed as a business district. The zoning was changed in the nineteen seventies to local biz, to um resident, single residence B. And the current owners have requested a uh zone change back to highway business. Uh, the planning board is supportive of that and is recommending uh rezoning of that property. For consideration by voters. Uh, there's another article where they've reserved um potential changes related to the MBTA Communities Law. Westwood is currently waiting for a decision on whether or not our Mumford District that was approved um. At the May twenty twenty-four meeting, if that is compliant with the MBTA Communities Law. We had hoped to hear by December thirty-first, which was the deadline. We have not yet heard and I understand that the state is still reviewing. Tens of of communities that submitted um their zoning. In the later half of the year. So uh, we did reach out. We haven't heard back on exactly when we will expect. To receive compliance, but this article is being reserved just in case we have to make changes to achieve compliance. We don't expect we will have to, but. The planning board is reserving an article just in case.
Nora, a quick question, the Providence Highway one. Does that mean that any of the businesses that are located in that. Residentially zoned area are paying residential tax rate and not commercial tax rate?
No, regardless of the zone, if it's a commercial use property, it pays a commercial tax rate.
Very good. Thank you.
Uh, if we have a a mixed use property, a portion of the building would pay residential and a portion would pay commercial. It would be divided. Uh, so then the next article proposes a zone. One of two potential zone changes related to a property at one thirty-one East Street. That's the Meditech property, which has been vacant for a number of years. Uh, there are two options that the planning board is considering. One would be to overlay that property with the FMUOD five. Zoning overlay district. That's the same district that applies across the highway on um East Street um. Uh, the the Shields MRI property is one of them, the circumferent circumfrental highway properties that are split between Westwood and Dedham. There are four properties on that side of the highway that are in the FMUOD five, so it would stretch that overlay district to. This side of the highway to cover the uh Meditech property. That's one option. Um, and that that option would also add hotel as a permitted use within. A a special permit permitted use within the FMUOD five. Another option that the board is considering is. Leaving the zoning as is on that property. It's currently zoned as Administrative Research Office. That's the underlying zoning. And adding the uh allowable use of a hotel to the ARO district. There are two ARO districts in town, so if that's the option that the planning board pursues. Uh, town meeting will be asked to decide if they're interested in allowing hotels in both of those ARO districts. So the one district is the Meditech property, a single, single property district at one thirty-one East Street. The other ARO district is off of High Street, um, Lauterbrook Road and um Fox Hill Village are both within that district. Then there's another article that proposes housekeeping changes. They have not all been identified yet. Um, hopefully they will be by the beginning of the meeting, the public hearing on January twenty-eighth. But if other uh housekeeping changes come up throughout the hearing process, the planning board will be able to address those. And just to remind, a housekeeping changes are minor changes that where we find numerical errors or grammatical errors, spelling errors, things like that. So I believe those are the six zoning articles.
Thank you, Nora.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions for Nora at this time?
None.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so the next matter on the board's agenda would be um. Well, well, but we do two, we have two citizens petitions um. I would just ask town council just to talk about um, discuss the first or discuss the two citizens petitions.
We have two citizens posit- posit- uh petitions, pardon me. One is from Rebecca Ames, looking to amend the bylaws to change the date of town meeting. Uh, the bylaws don't define when town meeting is. It it is in the charter. And therefore, th- that petition article is not effective. Uh, but she has more than ten sig- ten signatures, which requires us to put it on the warrant. Uh, she's been communicated with about this. Uh, it will have no impact and. In the ten and FinCom should recommend indefinite postponement. The second article is one where Mr. Uh, Private Terra is the lead petitioner. Uh, uh, an ex- an extra yard waste pickup that was discussed earlier tonight. Uh, uh, that i- he has adequate signatures. They've been verified, as did Mrs. A- Ms. Ames. So that's going to stay on the warrant for the time being. Hopefully, if uh Todd is effective in negotiating uh a new contract, that can also be. Uh, uh, indefinitely postponed by the FinCom. Uh. So those are those two articles. Ha- happy to answer any of the questions you might have about that.
Joe, are you still uh pushing your citizen's petition? I'm confused.
Oh, I am too. Um, we really tried to get this resolved before the last minute. Unfortunately, uh, we weren't able to and um. As I said earlier, this goes back quite a ways. Chris and I discussed it in July and December. Um. I feel like I have to keep it on the table, Mary Ann, until we get some sort of answer.
Uh, it it can stand there for the time being. It's doing no harm at this point in time. Um, and if we can resolve the waste management contract. It can go away or be indefinite.
Indefinite, indefinite postponement. Yeah.
Joe, I guess I'm I'm confused as to why you would even just take this tack. I mean, it's an operating budget issue that I would think. That the three of us would discuss as part of the discussions with town staff with respect to the operating budget. Um, I'm confused as to why this rises to the level of a si- a wa- a citizen's petition article. I mean. That's, that would be, I think, the first thing that we would be doing is discussing it as as a board.
Well, I discussed that with Chris, as I said, back starting in twenty-three. Um, in fact, at the January, I'm sorry, the February, our last February meeting, um. Chris did admit that, yes, I have been asking him persistently, but it's never gotten on onto the table and um. I felt like I didn't have any choice.
I think.
Would you wanna discuss it?
First time you brought it up, we said, okay, w- well, what are you willing to cut to fund it? And I think that we're in that same sort of position now. Maybe, maybe there's going to be some good negotiation that Todd Todd does with. You know, that's allowing it to be funded. I think, but you know, when it comes to. Items with respect to the operating budget and us trying to operate within the confines of Prop two and a half. It's incumbent upon us to debate these things as a body. To help make the the proper recommendations and prioritization for the town. And then after that, if somebody is unhappy with the outcome. Then I I would think it would be a citizen's petition article. It just, it strikes me as odd as as one of the three of us going that route.
Um. I I understand what you're saying, Rob. I was hoping, um. As I said, this has gone on for quite a prolonged period. I was told numerous times that it was being negotiated. Um, and then in December. Six, I was told that Heather needed twelve more days to come up with an answer. Um, I've been pursuing this for a while through the town administration. I thought if we could not, I really hoped to resolve. I did not want to do. Uh, an article on town meeting floor. I really didn't want. I was hoping we could do this, but I was never invited to discuss. In fact, if you recall, Rob, when I, at the Feb- at the uh January meeting, I said that. I'm sorry, the February meeting. I told Chris, I said, that when I picked up my Capitol items book, I said. When we do the operational budget, I would like to have some input into that, especially the DPW operational budget. Chris stated that we would discuss that in January and I said, okay. And if you recall at the February meeting, when I asked about discussing it, you said, Joe, this is how we do it.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, if I may, cause my name and my title is being thrown out a couple of times.
Sure.
I'd just like to share a couple of comments.
Yeah.
Um, so we did have a conversation. We are looking at the extension um of a contract. Um, I did have a conversation with the chair on January second, which was last Thursday, mentioned to him that. Um, I was not able to have a conversation with Todd because Todd was on vacation, that I would be able to have a conversation with Todd on Monday. I had that conversation on Monday. I shared with the chair that I called each of you individually, shared with you the outcome of that conversation and where we are, and this is what was presented to you today. So um, we did not, as Todd said, he only got the um extension, the draft or the first. Crack of the extension on December twenty-third. He was that away. Um, uh, for the holidays, we didn't have an opportunity. To talk about it last week. Um, the the, as you know, the warrant still hasn't been closed yet. The warrant is being closed today. Um, or it's gonna be proposed for you to close it today. Um, and you know, Joe felt that. The filing, the citizen's petition um on Friday was his, was his best option to preserve that right.
I I guess the question that I've got is the petition is filed, doesn't identify any funding source. When it was filed, it, there wasn't any knowledge that there was a funding source that would be available. Because Todd hadn't yet been able to review this revised contract. So I just think, you know, it is our job to say. What we are prioritizing and make it fit within the budget. And so I just, I I don't understand us, one of us filing a citizen's petition article. That circumvents this body's ability to. Set the priorities and manage the town's budget. It's just, it it strikes me as irresponsible or odd.
Well, if I'm irresponsible, I hear you. But I did identify a funding source and Chris and I did discuss that.
The, but that wasn't included in the petition?
No.
Well, okay, well, what was the funding source at the time?
I think I said the, Chris, I say the mills and hotels and you said we would not be able to do that. But we may be able to set aside a portion of the select board reserve fund.
But those are one-time funds for on.
This is a, this is a one-time thing.
So you only want the, you only want the pickup next summer?
To find out if it works. I was told that Mary Ann did something similar to this with the traffic thing someplace, Mary Ann. I think uh, they said that there's a traffic study needed. It's a one-time thing. And this is a one-time thing to see. It hasn't been looked at in ten years, Rob. I think we should revisit it.
I thought I just heard Todd talking about it being hard to the contract if if the contract comes back favorable, which would make it an ongoing pickup.
That would be great.
Part of the ongoing budget. So it doesn't sound like it's someone. That's all.
Mm-hmm. If he can get it, but originally it was discussed to be a one-time thing. Am I cor- incorrect, Chris?
You mentioned um meals and hotel tax. I shared with you my concern. I said if um a way of looking at this is a pilot program and see if the board would be willing um to use a select board reserve. As a pilot program um for that. Yes, I did say that too.
I'm just trying to get something for the seniors, Rob.
I I I understand. I I and I don't have a problem with you trying to get it. I just think that it's our responsibility as the stewards. That we are to operate an operating budget within the confines of what the levy limit is. That's all. And so sometimes that's going to mean having to make trade-offs, one thing for another. If if we deem it to be something that's important enough that rises to the level that something else should be sacrificed for it. That's what we're here for.
No, I I understand, but do you understand that when I said that when. The operating part of the budget is discussed, that I would like to be part of that? Is that clear?
I, yeah, sure. And.
And and just for the record, Mr. Chair.
Isn't that what this is?
The operating part of the budget as of yet.
No, no, this is.
That we discussed at the next meeting in January.
No, this is back in October twenty-three. And then in February, when I said, what happened to my discussion on the operating budget, the DPW? Uh, that's when you said, Rob, well, this is how it's done.
We, and we're, that's what we're doing right here. We're discussing the operating budget right now. As a, as a body, as a board. So that's, that's, that would have been your opportunity then. That's all.
I guess, I guess as a manager, I would look and see if there's another opportunity within Todd's budget to absorb this. But I wasn't given the opportunity.
This is, this is the opportunity. This is the direction where we have that discussion. Where we're, where we're presented with the first pass of the operating budget. We have those conversations. And if there's something that is not part of the operating budget that we deem, somebody deems important. Then we have to identify an alternative that gets cut to fund it. Or we're saying that we're looking for an operating override. That's all. I mean, it it's, it's pretty black and white. Okay.
So that's the listing of the warrant, um, current listing of the warrant articles. Um, I want to thank you for your time, um, for your conversation and your, your thoughtful questions and we'll get back to you with the information that you asked. Um, at this time, Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda would be to close the twenty twenty-five annual town meeting war.
Point of order.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I I apologize. Town council did have that conversation. I would defer to town council at this point.
Mister, Mister Chairman, I I, you and I discussed this today.
Yes.
I don't think you should participate in the discussion or or the closure of the warrant.
All right, and uh, Tish, you can give me a ring where I can sign back in.
Is, Pat, is that because he has a citizen's petition?
Petition and he would be voting for his own petition. It's a, it's, I do this with an abundance of caution.
I I understand.
Thanks, Pat. See you folks on the other side.
Mary Ann, would you like me to make that motion?
Sure. Thanks, Rob.
I moved that the select board vote to close the town meeting warrant for the twenty twenty-five annual town meeting. And public the draft article listing on the town's website.
And I will second that out of necessity.
And all in favor?
Oh, can't do that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Gotta call the roll, Mary Ann.
Yes.
Oh, I'm calling the roll.
Yes.
Um, sorry, uh, Rob.
Hi.
And I vote aye as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Pat. Tish, if you could bring the chair back in, please? Okay, thank you. Welcome back, Mr. Chair. Um, the next item on your agenda, Mr. Chair, is the reaffirmation. Of the diversity, equity, inclusion DEI statement uh that the select board back on December twenty, twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Um, voted on. Um, I know that um, select board member. Uh, Levine Cummings is the select board liaison to the HRTF. Um, request that you ask her to speak on this.
Mary Ann, please.
I I'd be glad to. Thank you very much, Joe and Chris. So as you know, Martin Luther King Junior Day is a federal holiday. Signed into law by President Reagan in nineteen eighty-three and will be observed this year on January twentieth. It is a day to honor Dr. King's life and legacy. And to reflect on our own commitment to the pursuit of peace, justice and service. Uh, it is in that spirit that both the main library and the Islington Library will have book displays and resources. Available in celebration of Martin Luther King Junior Day and will also provide a playlist of documentaries. And videos to share online. As you also know, and as Chris just mentioned, in twenty twenty-one. The town administrator in Westwood appointed a human rights task force. The purpose of which is to educate, inform and make recommendations. and make recommendations to the local government and community about issues that relate to human rights. The current members of the task force I would like to recognize are Danielle Sutton, Melinda Garfield, Joan Courtney Murray, Latifah Frank, Lizzie McGovern, Amanda Phillips, Connie Rizzoli, Sergeant Heather Rose, and Mandy Taft Perlman, and I serve as liaison. Um, as part of the task force's recent discussion about the celebration of MLK Day, a recommendation was made, which I fully support, that this board reaffirm the town of Westwood statement on diversity, equity, and inclusion, which was adopted by the select board in December of twenty-twenty-one, released jointly with the task force, and at a time when only one of our current members, Rob Gotti, was serving on the board. If there is no further discussion, what I propose to do is to read the statement and then move that this board reaffirm it.
I totally support that, I know there was a lot of discussion, uh, around the crafting of this. And I know my colleagues and I at the time were very, very comfortable and enthusiastic in endorsing this. And I think it's a, a great thing for us to endorse going forward.
Please, Mary Ann, that'd be great.
Thank you, thank you both. Uh, this is the town of Westwood's statement on diversity, equity, and inclusion. We, the members of the select board, wish to make a statement in support of diversity, equity, and inclusion in Westwood's town government, schools, and community as a whole. We believe the following to be true about this town, that we are so proud to serve. Westwood is part of a nation founded upon the principles that all people are created equal and that each person has the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. It is up to all of us to move our community and country ever closer to these ideals for all people. One of the many strengths of our community is the fact that we are made up of individuals who are diverse in their ethnicities, racial backgrounds, spiritual and political beliefs, gender identities, sexual orientations, socioeconomic status, physical and neurologic abilities, and more. The town of Westwood strives to be, for all residents and community members, a safe place where one is free from discrimination and able to grow into the best, most authentic version of oneself and where we are committed to continuously learning and evolving through our connections to and mutual respect for each other and our community. The select board welcomes and supports the various contributions of our diverse community, knowing that it is a source of the strength and character of our town. We wish to affirm our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion in all facets of our policies and practices. We have received significant support and encouragement from residents and with the creation of our human rights task force comprised of volunteers who share the same commitment, together with the human rights task force, we are providing this statement to the town. We look forward to hearing how we can continue to advance diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts in Westwood, not only from the Westwood Human Rights Task Force going forward, but also for many residents who would like to share their thoughts, ideas, and perspectives on ways we can continue to improve our town. This work begins with each individual community member. Through our collective action, we can make real our ideals. And with that, I move that this board reaffirm the statement.
And I would second that motion.
Roll call, Mary Ann?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well, motion carries. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
That brings us down to old business update on the Obed Baker House.
We have Todd Sullivan coming in. Because I believe his son, Brad.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, guys. Long night, nine eighteen PM.
Not as long as, not as long as Concom meetings, Todd.
Um, I asked Tish to, uh, send some pictures to you guys, did you get them?
We did.
Yes.
Okay, good. Well, the project's underway. Um, gotten pretty far along with the new cemetery shed. I was walking down there, um, last week, and I, I noticed that the, the location, it, it's, it's the right spot, it, 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 um, that new shed blocks quite a bit of the, um, Mackenzie Building out behind it, and once the, um, the vegetation's planted behind it, uh, behind the shed between the two buildings, there's going to be some even cypress hedges going in. It should work out pretty well. Um, so the guys are putting the siding on this week, you know, it's winter in New England, so things do tend to slow down a little bit. Um, and we've gotten, we've gotten pretty far along on the inside of the Obed House, did you guys see those pictures? You must have, right?
Yes.
Yep. Um.
It was, we saw the chimney at previous meeting, Todd.
Yeah, the chimneys are gone. Um, the, um, we, we've, we've taken out all the stairways, we, we've got it the whole place inside, so now we're reframing uh, the floors, the new stairway going in in the front. Um, and, uh, yeah, we're, the project's underway. We've gotten quite a bit of interest with, um, it's primarily local businesses looking to get, um, into a new building. Um, Brad's not here, but that's the amount of files that, um, from interested parties in town, so I'm encouraged with, uh, finding a good tenant for the commercial building. And, um, yeah, the project's underway. All good.
I thought, I thought the garage looked nice, Todd.
Thanks.
Yeah, it looks nice.
Yeah, it, it fits in well, I think that was the right spot. Um, yeah, so, here we go.
The update.
Yeah, that's it.
All right, Rob, Mary Ann, do you folks have any questions or comments?
No, keep going, Todd, it looks, it looks great, and I know when it's all said and done, um, you'll, you'll find the right tenant for the, the commercial side of it, and, uh, it'll be a welcome addition to town.
Rob, I think in the end, I was talking to my architect the other day about this, he says, you know, in the end, it, it's going to be a win-win for, 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 for both my business and the town. It's, um, it's, it's, it's going to be, it's good that we, we're doing this, this is a grotesquely underused or, I don't know how to explain it, but the piece of land there is, I mean, it's blank, so.
And by the way, but thank you for all the cleanup you did down in the wetlands down there, because that, that looks so different.
Yeah, yeah, it's come a long way. So we're getting there, guys.
All right. Any questions, Todd, thanks so much, thanks for staying up.
All right.
Take care.
I hope, I hope you guys don't have much longer. Nine twenty-one, wow.
Little, we've got a couple of articles.
All right, have a great night, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe.
Good night, I think this brings us up to appointments, reappointments, and boards. Uh, and we have an appointment for Dedham Westwood Water District and Historical Commission. Um, did you, Chris, did you want to take this, explain these two candidates?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so the chair, myself, um, and the executive director from the Dedham Westwood Water District did interview Ms., uh, Ms. Perkins. Um, uh, she was a sole applicant for the seat. Um, and at this point, we are, we are recommending to the board um, to appoint her to a three-year term to expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven.
Any questions, comments?
No, I served with Jennifer on the Little League Board ages ago, I know her, she's a good, good dedicated volunteer.
Good to hear, Rob, thanks. Um, Pat, can we do the two of these together? All right, I'll take a, I'll take a motion for, uh, appointing Jennifer to the Dedham Westwood Water District.
I hereby move that we appoint Jennifer Perkins as a member of the Dedham Westwood Water District Board of Commissioners representing Westwood for a three-year term to expire on December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-seven.
Second.
Roll call, Mary Ann?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well, motion carries. And the Historical Commission?
Mr. Chair, yes.
Yep.
Um, recommending to the board that we reappoint Mr. Eric Alden as a member of the Historical Commission for a three-year term to end on June thirty, twenty-twenty-seven.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Mary Ann?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
Thank you all.
That brings us down to select board liaison reports. Rob, do you have anything?
Nothing at this time.
Mary Ann?
Why, Joe?
I think you covered it early, Mary Ann, covered it well. I don't have anything at this time either. Um, December ninth meeting minutes, did you folks get a chance to look at those?
Yes.
Are we good? Anyone like to make a motion?
I move that we accept the regular meeting minutes for our meeting of December nine, twenty-twenty-four, as written.
And I'll second that motion.
Roll call, Mary Ann?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Brings us down to public and press. Is there anything in the queue, Tish? I don't see anything.
No, no questions.
Okay. Our next meeting will be, uh, Wednesday, Wednesday, January twenty-second at six PM via Zoom. On select board, we'll be going into executive session to discuss two issues. The first pursuant to general laws, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation involving the property at six thirty-seven High Street. And the second pursuant to general laws, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to a potential litigation involving the property at six sixty-five Clavatree Street. Discussion of all would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governing body if the discussion were to open, be done in open session. The board will not be returning to open session.
I hereby move that the select board adjourn to executive session for the aforementioned reasons.
Second.
Roll call, Mary Ann?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. See you folks on the other side.